Britt, President of the Board of Education, I would like to welcome you to the September 8th, 2021 Board Meeting. In keeping with the Board's commitment to open communication with the community, this meeting is being streamed live on the CCPS website at www.carolk12.org and broadcast live on Channel 21. We are also recording this meeting so that it can be accessed on demand on our website and broadcast throughout the month on Channel 21. Citizen participation is scheduled on the agenda for approximately 5:15 and 6:30 p.m. Speakers will be allowed in the boardroom for the allotted three minutes to address the Board. I would remind all of us to silence our cellphones and other devices around us that the microphones may pick up. Also, we should each silence our microphones when we are not speaking. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance followed by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, I need a motion for the approval of the agenda.
So moved.
So moved by Dr. Dorsey, seconded by?
Second.
Ms. Pataglia. Any additions, corrections? Ms. Savigny.
Ms. Herbert, I would like to make a motion to combine the two public participation sections at this meeting like we did last time. I think we have less than 20 speakers signed up, so we can just take them all immediately and then bypass Item 7 when we get there.
That would be fine. I need a second for that motion?
I'll second.
By Ms. Pataglia. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes unanimously. Now I need a approval of the agenda with the amendment that we will combine our citizen participation.
So moved.
So moved by Ms. Pataglia, seconded by? By Dr. Dorsey. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes unanimously. Now I need a motion for an approval of the unapproved August 11th, 2021 Board Meeting minutes.
So moved.
So moved by Ms. Pataglia, seconded by?
I'll second.
By Dr. Dorsey. Comments, questions, corrections? Ms. Devanchi.
On Page 2, under Public Participation, number, the person in number 19, the name should be spelled S-O-F-I-A. Sophia.
Thank you. Any other corrections? Ms. Savigny?
Ms. Herbert, I have a couple of minor things. On Page 5, in the second paragraph on that page, the second sentence starts out, "She feels we have enough mitigation strategies." I would say she feels we have layers of mitigation strategies.
Okay.
Versus the word enough. And then at the last sentence in the next paragraph, it says, Ms. Savigny added that many emails she has received from families and elementary educators are saying that masks are detrimental to the learning experience. And then if we can just cross out the last part of that sentence, because I had made, I had included a lot of things in there. It wasn't just those two things. So just end the sentence after the word experience.
Any other corrections? Okay.
Do you have, and at the bottom of Page 10, it says, "The Elementary Behavioral Task Force recommended three school sites have a behavioral specialist." That, I had actually said, "recommended three school psychs," P-S-Y-C-K-S, not sites, "and that we have only hired one." So that should, it should say, "The Elementary Behavioral Task Force recommended three school psychs, although we have only hired one at this point," and then cross out "have a behavioral specialist."
Anything else?
And there was one more thing. Hold on. Nope, that was it.
All right. Now I call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? It passes unanimously. And at this time, Mr. Kyler, we will begin our public comment. Oh, wait a minute. Whoops, you only hit, you had two. August 30th, my fault. Okay, I need a motion for the approval of the August 30th minutes. By Ms. Pataglia, seconded by? By Dr. Dorsey. Comments? None? All right. I call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes unanimously. And now, Mr. Kyler, you are on for citizen participation.
Citizen participation. To have an orderly presentation of comments by the public, the following guidelines apply. Speakers will be allowed in the boardroom individually for the allotted three minutes to address the Board. Citizens not appearing in person for public comment can write to the Board through email or US mail. Citizen participation is not intended to be a question and answer session. However, if citizens have specific questions, the superintendent will assign a staff member to make contact during the Board meeting to arrange a time to respond to questions. The superintendent Board reserve the right to correct misinformation presented as factual after the conclusion of the citizen participation period. Statements to the Board should relate to a recent agenda item, an agenda item that is expected to appear in the future, or a matter of general policy over which the Board has authority. Personnel matters, pending appeals, the actions or statements of individual staff, or items related to employee negotiations are not appropriate topics and may not be discussed. It is the intent of the Board to allow all citizens an opportunity to speak. Therefore, the Board has scheduled time in the agenda for citizen participation at approximately 5:15, and for tonight's agenda, we've eliminated the 6:30, and everyone will be allowed to speak at one time now. The Board reserves the right to limited number of speakers on a particular topic so that all topics may be addressed. If 30 minutes have passed and there are citizens who have not addressed the Board, additional time may be allotted later in the meeting. Comments are limited to three minutes or less. When the allotted time expires, the speaker is permitted to complete a sentence. The public may not display signs or posters during the Board meeting. In lieu of signs, or if you're unable to complete your comments for the allotted time, individuals are encouraged to submit remarks to the Board in writing. If you have something, please lay it on the corner of the very back table on your way out. Do not approach the dais to hand out stuff. Place it on that table. Because tonight, we're some people outdoor and indoor, what I'm going to do is I'll call a name. If you're here, come up and do your three minutes. If you're not here, they will go out to find you, but I'll call the next name so we can go ahead and do it while they're rounding up the other person. First speaker is Amy Parker.
Good evening. As residents of Carroll County, we support the school system and the current educational equity policy approved on June 12, 2019. We stand here today to remind you that CCPS has called to uphold this policy, which states the following objectives. Carroll County Public Schools provides equitable and inclusive learning environments that empower students to understand and appreciate diverse cultures within and around their community. Two, that the Board of Education evaluates the impact of every policy, procedure, and practice through an equity lens. Please note that the same document provides the following definitions of inclusion and equity lens, because there seems to be some confusion on that. Inclusion means involvement and empowerment where the inherent worth and dignity of all people are recognized. An inclusive organization promotes and sustains an environment where students and employees feel welcomed, seen, respected, understood, cared for, and most importantly, safe. Equity lens means that for any program, practice, decision, or action, the impact of all students is considered with strategic focus on underserved or underperforming student groups. We would like to remind you that educational equity, DEI, and multicultural education are not political ideologies, but rather, they are in place to create a welcoming and safe environment for all of our students. As a community, we have a responsibility to ensure a quality education for the children of Carroll County, and this includes giving students the tools to be successful in this multicultural world. Not doing so not only places them at a disadvantage in the world of work, but it creates the possibility for a hostile environment for our underrepresented students. Therefore, we call on the Board to implement the following action items. One, correct and call out the misinformation that is being shared in the Board meetings from certain parent groups. Provide educational resources to parents about what DEI is and why it's important. Doing so may alleviate some concerns from those who are misinformed. Two, prioritize hiring more staff for the Office of Equity and Community Outreach, whose job is to address the diverse needs of our multicultural community, which also is to include student voice. Three, produce a policy that allows and welcomes students and their teachers to discuss controversial issues, which may include omitted historical events, especially those of underrepresented people. And four, declare yourself and the Board to be pro-diversity, equity, and inclusion, and include an action plan for racial incidents and share it with the community. I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Nikki Gwinan.
I have a statement from a nurse who couldn't be here tonight because she's at work caring for pediatric COVID patients. I am a mother and a pediatric nurse at Johns Hopkins Hospital who is witnessing firsthand the effects of COVID and the Delta strain on children. Complications such as MISC or Multi-System Inflammatory Syndrome are very real and can cause long-term heart damage in children of all ages, regardless of gender, race, and medical history. Some children have zero pre-existing conditions and experience minimal to no symptoms of COVID during the active infection, but still present with MISC weeks to months later. You're refusing to enforce masks for this school year because of personal opinions rather than scientific data. Most importantly, you are not making our children's health a priority. As Carroll County Public School leaders, it is your duty to do everything in your power to protect our children by providing a safe learning environment. While I understand that masks can be an inconvenience for some, they are such a simple step in keeping our youngest students safe from a global pandemic when no vaccine is available for them. Unfortunately, they only work if everyone in the classroom wears one. Healthcare professionals wear masks every day for 12 to 16 hours a day without complaint because that is how you protect each other. It's such a small action that has a profound impact on reducing the spread of COVID, as countless research studies have found. Requiring masks would accomplish two things. You would decrease the spread of infection and allow a more stable learning environment with less interruptions due to quarantining. If you don't require masks, children will be quarantined with zero virtual learning planned, and they will ultimately fall behind. Let's lead our children by example and protect each other by wearing masks until vaccines are approved for children under 12. I urge you to listen to science rather than personal and political opinions and pass the mask mandate in Carroll County Public Schools, regardless of vaccination status, until our youngest students have the option to get vaccinated. Now, I'm not sure it was worth my time to read this nurse's letter tonight because this Board won't listen to Mr. Singer, or Dr. Lockard, or 70,000 pediatricians, or this country's top scientists. So why would they listen to her or to me? This Board is not regularly testing our students for COVID. This Board removed the virtual learning option. This Board said they'd provide KN95s, and now they can't. This Board has not made it possible to distance in schools. This Board has not done everything they could do to keep our kids safe. And if you don't believe me, talk to your kid's pediatrician and see if they agree with the decisions this Board has made. This Board has not acted responsibly and in the best interest of our children's health and the continuity of their education, and for that, they should be ashamed. They've shown time and again that they will not throw every mitigation effort at this disease to protect our kids, so that falls to us parents. I want to do everything I can to keep my kids as safe as possible, and I know the parents of Carroll County want to do the same for their kids. Thank you.
Thank you. Deborah Cicirelli.
Good evening. Based on the recommendations of the CDC, the AAP, and 20 of 24 Maryland counties, those 20 counties implemented universal masking prior to the State Board of Ed's vote on a mask mandate. After that vote, the number actually increased to 22 counties. Additionally, most local universities also require masks on campus. M. Daniel, Stevenson, Carroll, Community College, UMBC, Towson, CCBC, Mount St. Mary's, Loyola, to name a few, all including the only two in Carroll County, are requiring masks at the recommendation of the local health department. The Carroll County Commissioners also recommend universal masking in schools, noting especially the need in elementary schools where no students can receive the protection of the FDA-approved Pfizer vaccine. The Board's decision to not just refuse a mask mandate, but to actually try to fight the State Board's decision and look for ways to opt out is not only frustrating to parents, but negligent of the health and safety of students. There seems to be a misconception that Carroll County is in a better COVID situation than other counties in Maryland, and thus, we shouldn't be required to implement these safety guidelines. But we are squarely in the CDC's high transmission category, and we have been. We're not even at the low end of that category. Without masks, students are more susceptible to the spread of COVID and will be subjected to far more quarantine requirements. Your refusal to do what's best for their health and education will return them to asynchronous learning and remove them from in-class instruction. Masking is even more important since other mitigation strategies have not been implemented, including screening testing, distancing, and promoting or requiring vaccination. Carroll County has implemented air filtration units, the same ones used in Frederick County. Frederick County also mandated masks and still had 16 students quarantined at the start of the school year. The superintendent of Frederick Schools noted that without masks, the number of students having to quarantine would have been exponentially higher. This is precisely why more layered strategies are recommended. One component alone, okay, one air filtration unit is not nearly as effective as multiple layers of protection. Although I'm standing here reading this to the Board of Ed, they do seem unwilling to listen to differing opinions. Thus, my last comment is, comments are directed to the parents and caregivers of Carroll County. Helped us protect the kids in our school. Send them masks this first week, these next few days, until the State Board's decision is finalized. This is not just a couple of parents asking for masks in school. This is 22 counties in Maryland, the majority of Maryland's universities and colleges, local health departments, local Carroll County leaders, nurses, pediatricians, and the CDC. If that isn't enough, talk to your child's pediatrician. Aren't these the voices we should be paying attention to when advising on public health? Thank you.
Thank you. Ava Bryant.
Good evening, representatives of our county's education system. Before I begin, I would like to ask you to think about why you're sitting in the seats before me. Why are you on the education team? I am here today to speak to you not only as one voice, but as many voices of all of the young men and women attending our public schools silently suffering from an invisible plague. This plague is mental illness. Mental illness is not only invisible to the bare eye, but according to the Family Guidance Center for Behavioral Healthcare, 20% of children have an undiagnosed mental illness. Now, you may be wondering where this precisely ties into our public education system, and to that, I give you this. When you are in Carroll County Public School System from grade 1 through 12, you are required to take a series of health classes. Grays kindergarten through 5th each take a health class as stated on the Carroll County Public School website. The curriculum stated for elementary health is as followed. Quote, "Students move on to middle school with an early understanding of the body system, how to get along with others, controlling emotions, making healthy decisions concerning food choices, peer pressure, hygiene, harmful substances, and safety," end quote. On October 1st, a law will be put into place stating that children as young as 12 years old will be able to seek mental and emotional help without the consent of their parents in the state of Maryland. This means that by middle school, children will be able to, able and allowed to seek out, help for their mental illness without the knowledge of their parents. This in turn also means that they are seeking out help before they get the chance to be educated. The middle school curriculum on the Carroll County Public Schools website is as followed. Quote, "The curriculum provides age-appropriate information that includes the family life, human development, HIV/AIDS, and substance abuse prevention, mental health, nutrition, fitness, exercise, and wellness-safety concepts," end quote. As a current student of Carroll County Public Schools, I find this untrue and unfair to parents and students reading up on their current or soon-to-be school programs. In the middle school that I attended, Shiloh Middle School, we spent one singular day on mental health, and the only illness we discussed was depression. We covered self-harm, suicide, and depression as a whole in a singular class period. What we did not discuss is other common mental illnesses like anxiety, eating disorders like anorexia nervosa and bulimia, bipolar disorder, PTSD, and so forth. I can also say unfortunately that we did not discuss the how. How and why is very important for an adolescent to understand because it helps them become less fearful and come to terms with themselves and the inner workings of their bodies. If we start educating about mental health in elementary school, we would have more of an opportunity to get more into depth by middle school. This would provide students with building blocks to learn how to help themselves best. Children often think there is something wrong with them or that it is very scary and troublesome when they are starting to develop symptoms of a mental illness. We could both educate and reassure our children if we took mental illness as more of a pressing matter. If our children went into middle school with a low-level understanding of depression, anxiety, and their own emotional and mental state, we could teach about PTSD, bipolar disorder, eating disorders, and dive deeper into science coping mechanisms and whys by middle school. With shifting the curriculum to educate young minds about mental health, this could mean high school students with a well-rounded knowledge about not only their brains, but their peers. This is critically important in an age of social media and a time period with such high suicide rates. In an essay I wrote previously, I discovered this quote. "In 2019, the CDC recorded 47,511 deaths by suicide, ranking it number 10 on the cause of death list for that year. Knowledge is strength and if we..."
Please finish your thoughts.
Knowledge is strength, and if we set a good foundation for our children and their mental health, we could both crush the stigma around negativity towards those suffering and help our children cope by better understanding what is going on within them.
Thank you. Wendy Novak. Kate? What is the last name? Sorry.
Martin.
Oh, okay. Got it.
It's just spelled funny. Good afternoon. My name is Kate Martin, and I'm a representative of the concerned parents of Carroll County. I'm here to express our concern about the Maryland Board of Education's unprecedented decision to create a statewide face mask mandate. We find the decision to be arbitrary and that there is no basis in fact as it relates to specific counties. One size does not fit all. There are many reasons why we believe it is wrong, and I'll focus on three key points. One, the State Board's action is inconsistent with past precedent, a claim validated by State Superintendent Chaudry, who in the preceding week stated the Baltimore Sun that the State Board didn't have the authority for the statewide mask mandate. Two, it's inconsistent with the governor's perspective that such decisions belong at the county level. And three, most importantly, it is inconsistent and undermines the clear intent of COMAR, which are the laws that the State Board must operate by. The State Board's action approved, but the State Board's action, if approved by the legislative committee, will create a regulation that will be in direct contradiction to several longstanding COMAR regulations that have not been amended. It is our contention that only the governor has the right, under law, to declare any statewide emergency, which is clearly defined in COMAR Public Safety Article 14-303. As the code outlines authorities, the State Board has not granted authority to declare a statewide emergency as they have. This misguided assertion was key in granting themselves unique and unprecedented rights to act in manner to deprive counties of their expressed rights and responsibilities as defined in COMAR Chapter 13A.02.02 Emergency Plans. Following are quotes taken from this code that states, "Emergency-related issues are uniquely and directly the responsibility of the county and not the State Board." This chapter sets forth the requirements for emergency plans that shall be developed and implemented by each local school system in Maryland. Local school system means any of the 24 local public school systems in the state. School emergency plan means a plan for each public school grounds within the local school system that addresses mitigation, prevention, preparation, response, and recovery to an emergency. And central administration emergency plan means a plan for each local school system. Yet the Board, yet the State Board now asserts all of these emergency responsibilities assigned to the local school system by regulation are, without amendment, no longer valid and are void as a result of their statewide emergency declaration. Furthermore, as a result of the recent case law, Citizens for Responsible Curriculum versus Montgomery County, the State Board is on record asserting, "In cases involving quasi-legislative acts such as adopting resolutions, the State Board will limit its review to questions of illegality and will not substitute its judgment for the local Board." Carroll County's optional mask position was a resolution, and as such, the State Board cannot, as reflected in their own words, substitute its judgment for that of the local Board. We request that Carroll County Board of Ed stand their ground against the overreach by the State Board and request formal opinion from the Attorney General explaining the basis of his position that the State Board is lawfully and directly authorized to establish a statewide emergency. Contingent on the veracity of the Attorney General's legal opinion, the Board of Ed should make an informed decision whether the, whether the act of depriving the Carroll County Board of Education of COMAR authorities and responsibilities...
Please finish your thoughts.
Until the formal opinion is received, we request no action be taken to mask all students in Carroll County. Non-elected bureaucrats should not be allowed to overrule local elected officials. Thank you.
Thank you. Wendy Novak.
Hi, I'm Wendy Novak. I'm the mother of three students, two graduates, and a sixth grader at Sykesville Middle. I'm going to read some comments that people submitted for public comment. At least, at least 10 studies have confirmed the benefit of universal masking. Masks work best when everyone wears one. Your mask protects me, and mine protects you by blocking particles in my breath from making it past the barrier. They do not work as well if only a handful of children are wearing them, but that does not mean they won't work if everyone wears them. It's not a perfect solution, but masks are the best tool we have to try and slow the spread. I do understand the desire for parents to have a choice, but I can also choose not to take my son to restaurants or Walmart if there are large crowds and masks aren't required. I cannot choose to not send him to school. Stop listening to the loudest group that absolutely does not represent the majority of parents. Mandate masks in school. Another person wrote, "Our son was born prematurely at 29 weeks. Has had numerous hospitalizations in his young life, still lives with chronic lung disease, unknown lung scarring from his illness and asthma. As a result, we have been very, very cautious when it comes to COVID and kept him home for virtual preschool last year with Carroll County Public Schools. This year, we do not have a choice. It's either apply to home and hospital, only guarantee a few hours of instruction a week, and have it reevaluated every few months for his eligibility, or send him to school with no protection, no mask mandate, no guarantee for his health and safety. If our son contracted COVID-19, it's very possible he could be hospitalized with a life-threatening serious illness." Another issue that needs to be discussed is the Board members' continued involvement in a Facebook hate group that was developed to do away with DEI in the curriculum, as well as fight the mask mandate. This group has made watch lists of teachers and students who they disapprove of, asked members to take pictures of classrooms and posters, requested maps of the inside of schools, and planned a protest of masks where they assigned parents to come to the school to protest, even if these adults have no students in the school. A BOE member should not be in this group and should definitely not stand idly by while these attacks are planned. Another person wrote, "I am writing to voice my disapproval with the decisions this Board has made regarding mask mandates. The State Board has voted for a statewide mandate for good reason, and delaying its inevitable adoption poses risk to our children and community. COVID is a major health concern, and it should be treated as such. If one chooses not to wear a mask, they are risking the health of those around them much more than their own. Therefore, masking cannot be treated as an individual's personal health choice if they want to physically participate in the surrounding community. Children who attend school are required to be immunized in all 50 states. These requirements have been upheld by numerous courts, including the Supreme Court."
Please finish your thoughts.
I'm going to skip to the conclusion. Of the 29 most recent public comments, only one was pro-mask. Parents are begging you to listen to the science, follow the AAP, the CDC, emergency room physicians, and watch the numbers as they are increasing. Protect our children. There is no data that masks are harmful to children, despite what some of the Board members claim. There is an increase... There is an increase in pediatric deaths from COVID. Do we want to wait until a child dies before we take precautions? The bylaws indicate that the children should be educated in a safe environment. The inconvenience of a mask outweighs the risk of long-haul COVID or death.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Belinda Lawson. I wanted to say a few words for Brian Thompson, who couldn’t make it this evening. Tonight, we have several members of Concerned Parents who will be addressing topics spanning mask, local autonomy, diversity, equity, and inclusion. We appreciate the Board’s acknowledgement of our letter on these topics and ask that it be added to the Board’s agenda for policy consideration. Lastly, while we support our Board’s decision to maintain the mask choice policy, we ask you to go one step further and to join Somerset County to make it permanent. I’m here to address concerns I have within your central office, specifically the Equity and Inclusion Office. One of your core beliefs within Central is maintaining a safe and orderly environment for students and staff. Well, I’d like you to know, we have reason to believe that your Equity and Inclusion Office has taken it upon themselves to override the Board of Education and work directly with a student organization that 100% supports the racist agenda that is parallel to BLM. As you may already have discovered with the rest of the country, this organization is riddled with the most extreme hate form of hate towards Caucasian people I have ever seen. The constant demands for black liberation, aka black power, is extremely uncomfortable, not only to your white students but to some minority students, including mixed students who have all races within their family. You see, our Concerned Parents Group wants to unite students and stop the grouping, stereotyping, and discrimination that’s happening. And while we are fighting against this, you have a central office staff member encouraging the divide amongst students. This puts educators and students in an uncomfortable environment, constantly having activities and pushing for black power and not caring one bit about the rest of the 97% of students. This isn’t diversity. What you’re doing is allowing employees with the excuse of “we didn’t know it was happening” to spoil your school system and deeply damage the community, reversing all the great accomplishments and changes within Carroll County in the last 30 years. When my daughter returns to CCPS, I would like her to learn in an environment that focuses on her achievements, not her race. You see, she will be educated in civil rights, the great changes we’ve seen in America. She will be taught how America came to be the best country in the world. She will know love, respect, and appreciate her country instead of hate. She will know all of the presidents, not just one. She will be able to recognize progress by knowing we’ve had a black president and currently have a black vice president. She will know how to move forward great and not harbor on our country’s past mistakes. She will know she can accomplish anything. I hope it will be a welcoming environment, not just for her because she has dark skin, but for all of your students. That is why I’m standing today. Thank you.
Thank you. From Mount Airy, it looks like Rita Misery? Sorry?
That’s okay. Thank you. I’m a resident and taxpayer in Carroll County, a parent of three CCPS graduates, and I support strong communities and public schools. I’m not employed by Carroll County or CCPS. I’m here today to express my concern and to express the concerns of others in my community, including health providers, over the Board’s decision to disregard mandatory masking recommendations when the rates of COVID-19 transmission are substantial or high across Carroll County. I do understand the desire to return to normal, but I believe the risks of doing so during the current pandemic are underappreciated by this Board. I’d like you to consider, and I have six things to consider here. Although current evidence suggests that healthy vaccinated children may be less susceptible than elderly or otherwise immunocompromised individuals to serious complications from this novel disease, CCPS has an obligation to provide a safe, secure environment for all students and staff members, including those who cannot be vaccinated and those with known or unknown susceptibilities, and who may transmit disease to vulnerable family members and the community at large. An ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure. Maintaining low infection rates by vaccination, masking, hygiene, and distancing prevents spikes that can generate more infectious variants and rapidly overwhelm our local health facilities and services, thereby increasing the rates of morbidity and mortality associated with this disease. CCPS prides itself on quality of education and student performance. What impact on educational outcomes does repeated quarantine have compared to masking in the classroom? CCPS and Carroll County government pride themselves on operational efficiency. What are the monetary costs of virtual instruction when significant numbers of students and educators opt to or must stay home because of illness and/or rolling quarantines? What educational programs and services will be cut to offset these costs? The argument that something as simple as non-invasive as masking in public schools should be left solely to the discretion of the local Board of Ed is inconsistent with Maryland law. I think it’s short-sighted and potentially dangerous, particularly when local, the local BOE refuses to act on local health department recommendations during a pandemic. The argument that masking in public schools overstepped civil liberty seems arbitrary and disingenuous. Our children graciously accept, and they adapt to dress codes and requirements, for example skirt lengths, sports uniforms, seat belts, both inside and outside our public schools, that may cause individual discomfort simply because society has decided it is in the best interest of the majority. I believe masking requirements, based on scientific evidence that it will help protect the health and well-being of our children and communities, is wise and just at this Please heed the advice Mr. Singer and other public health experts who understand rapidly evolving health metrics, value public education, and are doing their very best to protect the kids, other members of our community, and critical healthcare resources, so we can return to normal together as soon as possible.
Thank you.
Hello, and thank you for your time. I’d like to take a minute to read some excerpts from the Proceedings of the National Academy of Science. This is a paper published in the scholarly community specifically as, in regards to policymakers needing guidance on the use of masks by general population as a tool in combating the acute respiratory syndrome that causes COVID-19. Their conclusions are as follows. Our review of the literature offers evidence in favor of widespread mask use as a source control to reduce community transmission. Non-medical mask use materials that obstruct particles of the necessary size, people are most infectious in the initial period post-infection, where it is common to have few or no symptoms. Non-medical masks have been effective in reducing transmission of respiratory viruses, and places at time periods where masks usage is required or widespread have shown to substantially lower community transmission. The available evidence suggests that near-universal adoption of non-medical masks when out in public in combination with the complementary public health measures could successfully reduce the R-value to below 1, thereby reducing community spread in such measures that are sustained. Economic analysis also suggests that mask-wearing mandates could add $1 trillion to the U.S. GDP. Models suggest that the public mask-wearing is most effective at reduced spread of the virus when compliance is high. We recommend that use of, that mask-use requirements are implemented by governments, or when governments do not, by organizations that provide public-facing services. Such mandates must be accompanied by measures to ensure access to masks, possibly including distribution and rationing mechanisms so that they do not become discriminatory. Given the value of the source control principle, especially for pre-symptomatic people, it is not sufficient for only employees to wear masks. Customers must wear masks as well. It is also important for health authorities to provide clear guidance for the production, use, and sanitation or reuse of masks, of face masks, and consider their distribution and shortages allow. Clear, implementable guidelines to help increase compliance and bring communities closer to the goal of reducing, ultimately stopping, the spread of COVID-19. When used in conjunction with widespread testing, contract tracing, quarantining of anyone that may be infected, handwashing and physical distancing, face masks are a valuable tool to reduce community transmission. All of these measures, through their effect on the R-value, have the potential to reduce the number of infections as governments exit lockdowns, keep transmissions low, and preserve healthcare capacity will be crucial until vaccine can be developed. This was published in January prior to vaccines becoming available.
Please finish your thoughts.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, and thank you for letting me speak. I’m Kim. As educators, your only job should be to teach academics, not morals, values, political ideology. Judging people based off their physical characteristics is wrong. CRT teaches, “If you’ve been tainted as white, there’s nothing you can do about it, and you’re always racist, even if you think you aren’t. My children would be named as the oppressed for the victims. What are we teaching, what are we doing to our kids? Instead of healing our country from its past, CRT has proven to be poisonous to liberty, true community, and our common humanity, teaching our children to think they are, this, to think this way and to look for racism in every situation. It means that friends and family members will eventually reject one another based on their differences. It will teach my children to reject over half of their family because they are white. You say that CRT is not in CCPS curriculum, but it’s evident, based on what we’re hearing throughout the community, at these board meetings, and across the country that’s being taught to our children. It may not be labeled CRT, but it’s there. We need you to take a step further and put action into your words. Any teacher who teaches outside of academics, we want you out now. Allowing teachers to sneak in their own ideologies, political beliefs into their curriculum without review needs to end today. I refuse to raise my children on hate, racism, and victim mentality. I raise my children to love every person with, and to treat everyone with respect. If you allow this filth into your classroom, we will continue to pull our children out. CCPS has lost millions of dollars in the last year, and will continue to lose money if they continue to do this. Nobody is against diversity. CRT doesn’t unify, it divides. We want diversity, and we want unity. Equity and diversity cannot coexist. They are a contradiction. If two people are diverse, they bring different talents and abilities to the table in precise proportion to their diversity. The consequence of, that encourage that diversity and giving it free play in the world would be an exacerbation of inequality rather than its elimination. If equity is the goal, then diversity would have been done away with. Eliminating of differences is by definition the elimination of diversity. It violates the Civil Rights Act of 1964, which prohibits discrimination and racial segregation in schools and public accommodations based on race. And this alone, the school should not be receiving federal funding. Federal court standard says, “Teachers cannot allow their personal beliefs to interfere with their obligations to deliver the school’s curriculum, and they may not use their position as a teacher as an opportunity to inculcate students to their personal beliefs. Teachers are not entitled to cover topics or advocate viewpoints that depart from their curriculum adopted by the school board. They do not have a constitutional right of expression within their classroom. Maryland law also says that such teacher conduct is problematic and illegal as they are representatives of the school in positions of power, influence, and authority over students that are captive audience in school where they are present to receive an education.” And if you continue to allow this, you’re going to receive complaints. I mean, at some point, we’re going to have to join together and possibly file a complaint with the U.S. Department of Civil Rights, because my children are not victims. And if one person tells my children or teaches them that they’re victims, or treats them any different because of the color of their skin, like, that, that’s the end of it. Like, you are, this is teaching racism. It’s not doing away with it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Board. Thank you for tonight. I do have children in the school system, two at Century High School. I do have a child who graduated in 2016 as well, lived here for 15 years. I do want to say thank you. The last meeting, I was very encouraged by the fact that you are planning on standing strong against mask and keeping it optional, actually. I’m not against someone’s personal choice. I prefer that for myself and for other people as well. I, I was a bit disappointed by Superintendent Lockhart for wanting us to start the first day of school with masks. I could see where he came from, but what it comes down to is, this is a, you think I’m crazy, a bit of a war. They’re coming after us and our choices. I’m going to be called a conspiracy theorist, and I’m fine with that. I have no problem. We’re watching it. We’re given some abilities to go around and do the things we want to do, and then it’s taken from us for fear, to a virus. We’re not God. We cannot control a virus. We cannot hide from a virus. If people are afraid, that’s fine. Stay home, do what you wish. I will continue to live my life. I will not comply. Neither will my children. I’m also, I’m not anyone’s enemy either. I want you guys to have your choice. I want to have my choice for my family and my children as well. I want us to come together. Government is the problem. I’m not saying the Board, I’m saying the government, the ones who say to us, “You have to do this, and your constitutional and civil rights do not apply any longer.” This is where we’re at at this point. I’m 46 years old, and I’m going, “Well, thank goodness it’s happening now to me.” So I have a little experience beforehand, not much. So, a little more personal, my daughter has a 504 medical. Her pediatrician, and her neurologist, and her therapist agree that she should not wear masks at all, cannot give us a note why they’re afraid to lose their license. She passed out three times last year, had to be wheeled out to me from Century High School. She missed many days of school, and if she didn’t go, she might have committed suicide, okay? See, this is where I am. Yeah, I’m going emotional, I’m sorry, but it comes down to law. The Board has no right. I sent an email thanking the Board, and I also said in there, “I suggest a cease-and-desist be sent to the State Board before. Things cannot happen after. We have to make steps before.” They put it down, because they will. They will do this. They will force this on us. I will not live in a state like Australia. I will not live in a state like France. I will not live in Montgomery County where, what’s the guy’s name, Ehrlich, is talking about vaccine passports are a good idea. My children are fully vaccinated. I am not an anti-vaxer. I’m a personal choice advocate. Thank you.
Thank you. Christina Groen. Green?
Green, yes, sir. I’d like to add to the masking here, where everybody is speaking about education, and that is very important, because I hear a lot of reasons, pros of why we should be masking our children. I don’t agree that you can pick and choose which professionals you listen to simply because it doesn’t fit the agenda. Such a person would be a well-published scientist author, probably will say his name wrong, Baruch Venshobom. He is, he works in the Cardiology Division, Veterans Affairs, Palo Alto Healthcare System, Stanford University, Palo Alto, California, and has an affiliation with the Pulmonary Institute, Revan Medical Center, Bellinson Hospital, Petac Tivcom, Israel. He obtained his PhD through the university in clinical exercise physiology and pulmonary rehabilitation. And because of that, he has a strong interest in the relationship between health and masking. So it’s important to also state the dangers of wearing a mask all day with our children, where we, the parents, should get the choice to choose. It is between us, our child, and their doctors. So in his paper, he mentions hypoxia, hypercapnia, shortness of breath, as we just heard from Tammy’s statement of what happened to her daughter and her health issues, increased acidity and toxicity, activation of fear and stress response, rise in stress hormones, in immune suppression, fatigue, headaches, decline in cognitive performance, predisposition for viral and infectious illness, chronic stress and anxiety and depression. Long-term consequences of wearing face masks can cause health deterioration, developing and progression of chronic disease, and premature, premature death. The science is continuing to change. Every day, we hear them say, “It’s safe, it’s not safe, we should wear them, we shouldn’t wear them. We have a state of emergency, we’re no longer in a state of emergency.” Well, if you’re in a restaurant, you can take it off if you’re eating, but then you put it back on, and suddenly you’re protected. The science is not backing a reason to mandate these masks. And the science is there for how it’s also just as dangerous and a health risk to our children for wearing them all day. So to mandate a mask and tell the people that are concerned for their own children as well that they simply don’t care, that not wearing a mask equals not caring, is a very ignorant statement to make. I don’t rely on anyone in this room to protect my child but me. It is my choice to protect my child and how I do it. I take them to the doctor, I take them to places that I feel they are safe, and your job is to educate our children. And if they cannot focus, or think, or feel safe in their environment because of a choice that they have made, or a choice that’s been taken away from them, then we failed in our duties there as well. So I would like to- So I would like to stand by the Board and let you know that I, for one, and many others that may not be here tonight because they can't be, thank you and urge you to stay strong and to stay resolute because it's per county, not through the state. Thank you.
Thank you. Eric Toler.
Good evening. I'm not used to speaking, but I was disturbed last week at the Board's meeting. I looked at it intensely. And what disturbed me was I wanted to get my facts straight, so I went and researched about masks. And I want public, everybody wants their own way at times. You know, I like to have my way. But everybody has to buy car insurance whether they want to or not. Because in the event that you have an accident, you can't buy the car insurance afterwards. Just with masks, if I don't have a mask on, my son goes to school here. If he gets sick because someone else didn't have a mask, so where did his rights begin and where did that other person's rights begin? Because your rights might infringe on mine. So if everybody's doing the same thing, I think we'll all be safe. I was just looking at here, the Carroll County case rate has gone up to 14.25 as I looked at today. That's very high. It's in the red. In the last month, over 1,000 schools have closed in 31 states. So why emulate them? I would prefer to err on the side of caution than worrying about... It seems like the Board is worried about more about somebody telling them what to do. I don't know anybody born doesn't have somebody telling them what to do. Since I was born, my mama told me what to do and went on to schoolteachers and otherwise. This Board has to answer to the people. I have to answer to my boss at work. Every parent in here has to answer to either policemen or somebody else depending on what they're doing. So it's not about your pride, it's about saving our kids. Because if you look at, you find your kids behind one of those glass windows, there's nobody on this Board going to be here standing with me or with that parent saying, "Oh, my God, I pray for your kid." Why not prevent all that? I've had family members die from COVID. You can't touch them. They're on the other side of glass. There's nothing you can do for them. You can't even go to their funeral. I've had friends die from COVID. There were seven people allowed at their funeral. You can't do anything. So, I mean, put your pride in your pocket like I do sometimes, things I want to do. You can't drive drunk. You can get drunk at your house all you want to, but you can't jump in your car and drive on, in the road. Because you're not, after you, you're interfering with other people's rights as opposed to just your own. I have no problem with anybody protecting their kids. I want to protect mine. But your rights, when your rights start interfering with my kid's life, then I have something to say about it. And I appreciate the time you give me to say this.
Thank you. Patrice Beanbean. And let me remind everybody, you're most welcome to take off your mask when you speak if you so choose, but please don't lay it on the surface there. Please keep it in your hand. Our safety guys ask us to announce that. Guys, guys, hey, guys. I'm sorry. I just made an announcement because a few people did it and our safety people asked that, and I made the announcement. Chill out. Sorry, Patrice, your turn.
All right. Well, I find it interesting. I really don't have anything planned. I came here because I was absolutely amazed to find out that the school board of Carroll County was more intelligent than most of the people in the whole wide world. They are the one people that know that the coronavirus is not a problem. I listened to five minutes of Fox News and I was convinced you were right. Until somebody told me, "Well, the reason why that's a problem, the reason why you have to wear masks is because it's going to become a variant. And the variant's going to be worse, and it's going to be spread further." You guys, you know, why are you doing this to our children? Why don't you care about them? You're looking for a vote? They squeaked louder than I squeaked? Go read your public comments. The people for masks are squeaking louder. Read them. And if you're worried about whether you can do it or not, the Supreme Court made the decision back in the 1901 because of the pandemic then. And they said that the states can, for public health reasons, mandate such things as masks. So there's no reason why you can't mandate a mask. And these people saying you can fight the State Board? Sure, you can fight the State Board, but why do you want to look that stupid? Why do you want to be the next people in the newspaper? Carroll County students dying from COVID because the Board of Education doesn't care. They were looking for a vote from the people that squeak. Thank you. I'm just asking you to please do your job.
Thank you.
Take politics out and save our children's lives.
I have a second card for Wendy Novak, but she spoke, unless there's two of them. Okay. Jessica Garland.
Good evening. My name is Kit Hart, and Jessica Garland asked me to speak for her. Both of us are the mother, are mothers of five children. And those five children, we put, their needs are our life's priority. Nobody but my husband and I are better equipped to meet the needs of our children, especially not the unelected members of a state school board whose salaries we pay but who will never need to answer to God about their well-being. Those people on the state school board are looking at our children's health through a myopic lens focusing solely on a single illness, ignoring the mental, emotional, and spiritual needs of children. Why are we allowing people who've never even met our kids, who haven't picked them up from school wearing a mask soaked in saliva, who haven't taken our kids to weekly speech therapy appointments or reading tutors because we've noticed delays in their development? Why are we allowing them how to best parent our children? I refuse to parent my children in fear. These, these are bullies who are demanding major sacrifices from our kids in the name of public safety. They know as well as we do that COVID poses almost zero threat to healthy kids. Okay, a total of 341 adolescents total have died from the pandemic since the pandemic began 19 months ago. Okay, you're, okay, well, there, then, listen, stop talking to me. I have the floor right now. Compare that to the previous flu season. Almost 500 kids died from flu in a matter of months, okay? Let that sink in. These bureaucrats, these bureaucrats are setting the stage to cover the beautiful faces of children forever because they have made that the standard treatment in preventing illness. Parents can assess a unique child's risk because that is what children are, unique. We can determine if we are concerned about their physical health so much that a mask is necessary, or if their mental health requires them to be free from distractions, or if their emotional health demands that they see the faces of teachers and friends. We are the ones best equipped to determine if their spiritual health cries out for them to express their feelings, to show their smiles, and to reveal to the world their image of God. When our kids finally returned back to school last year, we stood by as they, as they experienced a stilted learning environment where they couldn't hear their teachers or see facial expressions, where they weren't able to give their friends hugs or play a game of tag like normal children, like all of you grew up doing, where the expressions mask up and six feet were more common than great effort. Our government leaders have told us that they just want to get the kids back in school. That's the goal they've set for themselves. Get the children into the building. Parents, people who care for children, set the bar a little higher. We want them to thrive in that building, to flourish and to learn to their highest potential, and they cannot do that with their faces covered. We aren't asking for anything unreasonable. We want to protect the most vulnerable and do our part to reduce the spread of COVID. We've all done that.
Please finish your thoughts.
Okay, but our children are not part of the population that we need to protect. They, by the grace of God, are the population spared by this terrible, terrible disease. When in history have we ever masked the healthy? When have we ever treated the very air that we breathe as toxic and the people around us as petri dishes of infection? What we are, okay, thank you very much.
Vaughn Taylor. Kelly Gordon. And that's the last card we have, so we'll wait until Kelly is in here.
Good evening. My name is Kelly Gordon, and I'm reading this statement for Jody Foster. She cannot attend board meetings due to disability and being immunocompromised. And these are her words. "I want to express my concern over the lack of a mask mandate in Carroll County public schools. I am a licensed clinical professional counselor providing mental health services to children and teens for well over 20 years and serving many students in CCPS. I am a parent of two children in CCPS. I am also an immunocompromised person and rely on the kindness of others wearing masks and getting vaccinated to keep me alive and continuing to be able to provide essential in-person mental health services to children and teens in Carroll County. In my experience, wearing masks has caused no significant detriment to students. Masks are mandated in my therapy office and no one has complained. My son has played soccer games in a mask. There is a lot of harm caused by not requiring masks. The first is the risk to the health of everyone, particularly the immunocompromised. The second is the anxiety that results in many when people are not required to wear masks. Also, if I became sick from COVID-19, I would need to stop providing essential services to students, causing much harm to them. Consistency and clear guidelines are very important for students. Starting out the school year with masks as optional creates chaos, confusion, and anxiety for many students, parents, and teachers. There are some that will be unhappy having to wear masks because they are uncomfortable. But other than limited medical exceptions, which can be managed with other strategies, masks are not detrimental to students. By requiring our students to sacrifice their own comfort for the good of the community around them, we are creating a better generation of students. Mask requirements encourage students to care about other, more vulnerable people like myself. They encourage kindness, compassion, self-care, generosity, resilience, and empathy, qualities that as leaders charge with caring for our students and community, we should all encourage. Not having mask requirements is disability discrimination. Those of us who are immunocompromised rely on the masking of others to keep us safe and healthy. CCPS should be welcoming to all students, parents, and teachers. Already I have to miss activities at East Middle, my daughter's school, because it is physically inaccessible to me. But now I have to also miss some events at my son's high school because there are no mask mandates. Even if my kids wear masks in school, if others do not, their safety, my safety, and the safety of everyone in the community we have contact with is at risk. People in Carroll County interact with others. One person's choice affects other people and leaves disabled students and people like me with less choices. It would be ideal if everyone chose to wear a mask for the betterment of others around them, but many will only wear one if mandated. Please make CCPS accessible and inclusive of everyone in its community by mandating masks. Keeping them optional is a discriminatory policy towards all disabled and immunocompromised people. Thank you."
Thank you. Do we, do we have any pub, any employee groups?
Yes. Hello, good evening. My name is Celeste Jordan. I'm Vice President of CCEA. I'm filling in for Teresa McCullough tonight and reading her statement. Good evening, Superintendent Lockhart, members of the Board and Commissioner Weaver. I'm Teresa Bazner McCullough. President of CCEA who represents teachers, counselors, RNs, speech pathologists, I'm sorry, speech language pathologists, OTs, and PTs who have begun the 2122 school year. "The Carroll County education will continue to consistently advocate for health and safety of everyone in Carroll County public schools and the greater community. Our second priority is to advocate for taking whatever mitigation strategies are necessary to ensure the continuity of learning for our children. I believe that we can all agree that we wish this pandemic were over and we could return to a sense of normalcy for everyone's sake. However, it is not, and we must do the best we can while keeping the priorities of safety and continuity of learning at the forefront. We will meet these challenges and be stronger from the effort in the long run. Let's all look for the best of intentions from those we might disagree with and demonstrate to our children how we can and should move ahead together." Thank you.
Any other employee group speaker? Thank you very much, Mrs. Herbert.
We'll wait till the room clears if people want to leave, and then we will move on. All right, and now we will get on with Board members and Superintendent updates. But first, Ms. Pataglia has a small announcement.
Tuesday, September 21st is Custodial and Maintenance Personal Recognition Day. These employees do whatever it takes to keep our buildings clean and well-maintained and to make our schools a safe, clean, and comfortable place to teach and to learn. Their work is vital, and we wouldn't be able to operate our schools safely and efficiently without them. On behalf of the Board, I would like to thank all the employees in our Facilities, Maintenance, and Operations Department for their hard work and dedication to our schools. So thank you, guys.
Thank you. So true. Can't run a system without them.
No.
All right, at this time, we have Board member activities and correspondence. Who would like to go first?
I can go ahead and go.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Pataglia.
I first want to congratulate HAFSA for winning the Buzz Challenge. HAFSA means Healing Opportunity Free From Addiction. This is an organization that was formed when their brother had died from a heroin overdose. His mother was an employee of CCPS. Jimmy was an incredible person, and he loved life, he loved his family, he loved his friends. And most importantly, he loved the Ravens. So his nickname was HAFSA, so they came up with this organization. And they won the Buzz Challenge this year. So I'm so proud of them, so proud that I am part of that, of their accomplishments, and advocating for them. Because also August 31st was Overdose Awareness Day. And many people know that I have a huge, huge heart, and I advocate so much for those that have addiction problems. HAFSA also has opened up their first home for those that are looking for healing opportunities from addiction. So again, this organization is doing some wonderful things for our community. Unfortunately, it was formed because of sadness, but it has become such greatness. So I'm very proud of them. We just got done the Maryland State Fair. I want to congratulate all of our students that participated. I saw several pictures, a lot of animals that were shown, auctioned, great crafts. Looked like it was an amazing time. September is, September, September is Suicide Awareness Month. And we actually had someone speak regarding mental health. And that is something else, again, that I advocate for is regarding mental health for our students and our staff to make sure that they get the help they need and they can learn about. And what better way than, you know, in elementary school, you can begin with just teaching some mindfulness skills and yoga. It's so simple. You know, my daughter's seven, and she loves doing tree pose. It is one of her favorite things to do, and she, she learns those techniques because she has learned how to calm herself when she needs to, to relax when she needs to, and how to handle situations that she might be in. So mindfulness is a great strategy for those. First day of school, yay! I know my three had a pretty good day. I haven't heard any complaints yet. I know they were excited. So I'm, I was glad to see so many pictures of students in their first day back to schools from different parents that I know. I do want to say good luck to all of our students that are trying out for various drama productions that may be in place in the fall. Our high school bands who are working really hard to prepare for competitions, our sports teams, and all students in various fall extracurricular activities. This Saturday, we will pause in remembrance of 9/11. It will be 20 years. And concerning the events that have happened recently regarding COVID or Afghanistan, I hope everyone can come together just for a couple of moments to remember and reflect on the events 20 years ago that day and how we all felt. And I think it is something we do need to remember. That unfortunately, that was something, it took something so horrible to bring the nation together. So I do hope- So, I do hope we can pause and unite in that sense. And just remember to be kind to each other. This is a difficult time. We said it the other day. Just be kind, be nice. That little bit of being nice to someone can go a real long way. That's it.
Thank you. Dr. Dorsey.
Okay, thanks, Mrs. Herbert. For this month, again, I participated in or attended the following activities. On August the 17th, I was involved in our Association's Equity Ad-Hoc Committee meeting, and during that meeting, we finalized our plans for the upcoming Board Service Academy, which was held on August 25th, 2021. Again, in that, on the afternoon of the 25th, we focused on our Educational Equity Board Governance Workbook. The workbook was well-received, and we were able to receive some pertinent feedback from the members who had attended that session. So, again, we know that that is going to be a resource that is going to be available for our board as well. And I have to say, the morning of the 25th, I participated in the Equity Day of Learning, which was held at Winters Mill, and I congratulate Ms. Mystery for sharing the keynote address that morning, and she very passionately and powerfully delivered the address to the attendees. After Ms. Mystery's keynote address, I was able to participate in the debriefing conversation with the one group that I was assigned to, and it's always good to hear reflections from our staff members. So, again, I thought it was a great opportunity that day. I thank everyone who has prepared for this school year. I know it takes the entire village from, you know, our central office staff, bus drivers, cafeteria workers, all of the assistants, teachers, everyone plays a part in preparing for our school year. Certainly, we thank the parents, and we thank the students. So, I just give best wishes to all of our students and staff for a successful school year. And I agree with you, Mrs. Bataglia, come 9/11, we really do need to take some time to remember, especially those who paid the ultimate price of giving their lives on that day. So, it should be a day that we come together and remember the sacrifices that were made for us.
Thank you. Ministry, DaVinci?
So, today was, of course, the first day of school, and I hope that everyone had a phenomenal first day of school, just like I did. Our students showed a lot of resilience and strength throughout this past year, and I know that they will continue displaying that too as we transition into hopefully a normal school year. On August 25th, I was given the wonderful privilege and opportunity to be the keynote speaker at the CCPS Equity and Inclusion Day of Learning. It was a really memorable experience, and I know that I will take a lot of those memories with me forward. On August 31st, I attended the CCSJ Advanced Retreat Outdoor School where we attended team building activities and planned for the next school year. Over the summer, I took up a personal research project regarding the student rep. I don't really know much of the history behind the student representative position, so I wanted to sort of look through the archives and see what I could find. And just as a fun fact, this position was formed in 1973. Carroll County was the first county in Maryland to form the student representative position on the Board of Education. In 1973, at the time, only Baltimore City had this position, so I'm very privileged to be sitting here beside all of you on the Board of Education today, and it just, it's really nice to reflect on the entire history that this position brings with it.
Well, thank you. Ms. Savigny?
I just want to echo some of the comments that were made previously about it being the first day of school. I just want to thank everyone. It's always a huge effort that goes into preparing the buildings, preparing the lessons, preparing for bringing the kids in that first day and making it such a good experience for them. So, I just want to thank everyone, parents in the community. I want to thank educators in the building. I want to thank central office staff. I want to thank the, our maintenance workers. I want to thank our cafeteria, our food service people. Like, it just takes a Herculean effort, and it really does take a community, and I just want to thank everyone for all their efforts for putting into that. And I do know that my kids had a great first day as well, so they came home very excited today to have been back, back at school with their friends. And I'm glad to hear that you had such a great first day, DaVinci. And I also want to echo the comments about 9/11. There are so many things that are dividing our community today, and I really hope that we can all take that one day and have some remembrance of the truly terrible events that happened on that day and how it did bring our community back together, and I think that we, hopefully, that we can remember what that was like and try to find a way to unite in how we are alike and not focus so much on how we're different for just one small moment. So, thank you, Dr. Dorsey and Ms. Bataglia, for those comments. I would like to echo those. And I do want to thank the community. We have clearly gotten a lot of feedback from many community members on both sides of some pretty significant issues recently. And for the most part, not everyone has been civil, but for the most part, people have been civil and respectful, and I do want to thank the community for their feedback. It's really how we understand where people are and all perspectives. So, thank you for staying engaged. We truly appreciate it.
Thank you. And Mr. Kyler?
And I'll piggyback a couple first. And again, thank everyone for their feedback here, outside, and the ones that have emailed. And it's only a couple of things I'd like to mention, like Ms. Savigny said, the majority care about our schools, have positive comments, care about their families and their students, and that's great. The fringe, I do not understand the comments that we do anything setting up here for votes. Two of the people up here can't ever run again. I think one person up here may have filed, but trust me, you don't get on a Board of Education for votes and political power. That just, that doesn't happen here. And, you know, I think, whether you agree with us or disagree with us, I think we all have the best interest of Carroll County public schools and the students at heart. I have six grandchildren. The last two started the day in Carroll County, and they loved it, and I've got a picture of each of the, each of the three pairs as they started for their first day, and they're all six in, and it's great. I love the history of the student rep, because another thing that I think is misinterpreted, Carroll County, I think, has always valued the student rep on the board, and we value very much the input. And I'll be honest, I love it that you even fight with us some, you know? I think it's great. As far as my out and about, last month, I was traveling, my wife and I were traveling. I was in Tocquegna, Alaska, and the library there offered me a room and a laptop, and I told them, these ladies I work with, they run meetings very long. Now, fortunately, it's a four-hour time change, but they said, I couldn't believe it. They said, "We close at 6:00, but we have to clean up. If you're 6:30 or 7:00, we'll be okay." And I want to thank them, and I have with a letter, obviously. And then the last thing I want to piggyback is the 911 and the, you know, let's all get along. I understand this is very, very emotional issues, and the science is not so black and white as some would like to think. On either side, it is, and I think we're all working to hopefully come out of this and do the best, and I want to thank everybody again for their comments. I want to thank everybody in, starting with Dr. Lockard, and the school system, a good first day. And I'd say more about individual things that happened, but he always accuses me of trying to jinx him, so I'm just going to say a good first day.
Thank you. Out and about, I want to thank everybody for getting the first day off. It was wonderful, and we still need bus drivers, so I have signs up at my horse farm, but we still can use bus drivers, and we thank everyone. We are way far better than most, but if you need a job, please feel free to come in and contact us. We'll take, we'll take bus drivers on. I had a great day today. I visited three schools. Everybody just seemed so happy to be back. It was a great atmosphere, and I need to thank everybody from the ground up for getting that day off right, and let's hope we continue. And most of you can remember where you were on 9/11. And it was scary. It was a scary thought. I was out of town, and I was actually in Kentucky that day at a horse sale, and the next thing I know, one of my dear friends is calling me and said, "Did you know what happened?" And you don't forget that day. So, love the one you're with. Don't forget to tell your kids every night that you love them, or in the morning, and all family. And I know this is an emotional time, but we do need to maintain civility here in this room, and everyone does get to talk. So, I don't mean to be a martyr, but I just, we need to maintain civility in here, and I thank you for your time. Dr. Lockard, you're on.
Okay, thank you. I want to echo the comments as it relates to first day of schools, first day of school being open, schools open, a big effort, and I think it's easy to forget, we had a few thousand students with us this summer too, which is not typical. So, we had a lot going on and a lot of extra work to prepare, but it was a great day. Mr. O'Neil and I spent the morning at a local elementary school and enjoyed every minute of helping escort kindergarteners and first graders to their classrooms from the bus, and seeing a lot of smiling faces and hearing stories about what they were excited about for school this year. And that's truly what it's all about, and so we're happy to be underway. Couple of notes of congratulations. We want to congratulate Mount Airy Middle School for being named a 2021 Maryland Children's Mental Health School Champion of the Year by the Children's Mental Health Matters Campaign. School champions were nominated by those in their communities for their outstanding awareness efforts during and around Children's Mental Health Awareness Week, which was held this past May 2nd through the 8th. Students at Mount Airy Middle School were engaged throughout the week in activities that promoted positive mental health. In addition, the school created a virtual mindfulness room that students can utilize when they're feeling overwhelmed or stressed. Activities included a self-care calendar, a self-care skill, and coping mechanism to go with the theme of each day, and photos with the giant Mental Health Matters sign. To end the week, students discuss the importance of mental health and receive bookmarks from the Mental Health Matters Campaign. So, we've heard a lot tonight about the importance of supporting our students as it relates to mental health and are very appreciative and proud of Mount Airy Middle School for that honor. Also proud, we are of our partnerships in Carroll County Public Schools. It's a big part of our strategic plan. It's something that our school system really relies and depends on utilizing the great partnerships in and around Carroll County. We can't do it alone, and we depend on a lot of great partners within the county to support us. So, I'm pleased to share tonight that Carroll County Public Schools recently formalized partnerships. We had these partnerships, we just hadn't formalized them yet, but we formalized our partnerships with the Carroll County Chamber of Commerce and the Carroll County Special Olympics. And we also expanded our partnership with the Littlestown Area School District. I'll talk about that in a minute. The Chamber of Commerce will provide support and assistance for school system initiatives and continue to sponsor our Carroll County Outstanding Teacher Award Ceremony. The school system will continue to work with the Chamber of Commerce on initiatives such as the Drug and Violence Awareness Expo, just to name, just to name one there. We have several. Special Olympics provides the opportunity for identified students to participate in the programs and coordinate program offerings such as young athletes, motor activities, training programs, and unified sports. Special Olympics also will offer service learning opportunities and recruit student athletes from early childhood through post-secondary education to participate in its programs. And I believe, Mr. Shakne, we will be having our 50th Special Olympics this year in April, so we're very excited about that milestone and the terrific partnership with Special Olympics. The Career Technical Education Partnership with the Littlestown Area School District has been expanded to include access to the JROTC program at Winters Mill High School. Littlestown High School students have the opportunity to join JROTC alongside students from Winters Mill and other CCPS high schools. We're pleased with the success that we've had with this partnership at the Career Tech Center that we've had for several years as well as JROTC. And as a reminder, our students in Carroll County always have first, first access to the Career Tech programs as well as JROTC. There are times when there are vacancies in some of those programs, and that's when Littlestown is able to support their students and support our programs, and we get tuition for that as well. So, it supports us, and a program like JROTC depends on enrollment, and so we want to keep those programs, you know, really robust in terms of enrollment so that we can continue those. And so, this helps also ensure, not only do we see tuition dollars coming, but we can sustain the programs over time for our own students. So, we really appreciate that. Those are my comments.
Well, thank you. Thank you, everyone. At this time, we will have COVID updates, and as Mr. Singer is coming forward, I do have to tell one story today. Ms. Gaddis and I spent a lot of the morning together at the high school and the elementary school. She did not go with me to the middle school. So, when I walked in and we all said hi, and the vice principal said, "Boy, you just missed it." A little second grader had got off at the middle school, and while they were waiting for her to get transportation up to her correct school, the elementary school, she told the guidance counselor in there, she goes, "I have a secret." And she opened up her bag, and she brought Toady with her, her little toad. So, I hope that little second, I know that little second grader got to school where she was supposed to, but I don't think Toady will come to school tomorrow. So, you know, that's the fun part of what we get to do. I know we, but we do, we, yes, yes, I hope Toady made it home. But, you know, you've got to have a little bit of lightness sometimes. Good evening, Mr. Singer. How are you, dear?
I'm doing well.
Welcome.
Good evening. How are you all doing?
We're hanging in there.
You're hanging in there.
That's exactly, we're doing well, thank you.
Hey, they went right on to the second slide, which just kind of shows where we are with our case rates. Back in June and July, you know, I certainly wasn't expecting to see a spike like this that we've seen with this Delta variant. I thought, you know, maybe when schools started back, we'd start to see some uptick, but our case rates are obviously extremely high at this point, and, you know, we went from having low levels of risk of transmission in Carroll County to pretty high risk of transmission. Next slide. This is the difference in the state just between the last time you guys, I was with you at a board meeting, I know you've had a special board meeting since then, on August the 11th, where we were at a moderate risk of transmission in Carroll County, and at this point in time, every county except for one jurisdiction in Maryland's at a, at a high risk of transmission. Next slide. This is just our case rates weekly. You know, the last couple of weeks, we've been over 300 case COVID, new COVID cases. Next slide. And that's just a rolling average that I share with you regularly when we have, have an update. Next slide. This one bears a little bit of talking about. You know, if you look at the red line on here, throughout most of the pandemic, our case rates in our population that's under the age of 18 have been pretty much the lowest out of any age group, and this is not case numbers, but it's based on numbers per 100,000 population. It's a, it's a ratio, so it's, it's the number of, number of people in that age group, so they're relative to each other. This week, the case rates amongst the group that's under the age of 18 is almost the highest of any of the age groups. As you can see, the 65-plus is our, is our lowest group, and the 45 to 64 is our second lowest group, and the orange line that's there, that's the 18 to 29 population. As you'll see as we get into the slides, those are largely our unvaccinated populations, and my message to everybody continues to be, if we, if we can get more people vaccinated, it's going to help us get through this a little bit better. You'll see as we, and I still want to talk a little bit more here before we go on to the next slide, but you'll see as we get into it, the difference that vaccinations make. I did want to point out that since August 30th, there have been over 50 cases of students that are enrolled in Carroll County public schools that have contracted COVID. And nationally, new cases among the youth have reached the highest level during the entire pandemic. Next slide. So, this gets back to the importance- So this, this gets back to the importance of vaccination. And what I did, I know there's been a lot of talk about breakthrough cases and people were questioning whether, how effective the vaccine is and all that. And I've heard a lot of people talk about, you know, well, maybe there's waning efficacy of the vaccine and that type of thing. And all those things can contribute. But I think the one important thing to understand is the portion of our population that is now vaccinated has grown to be a very large portion of our population. And, and the portion of our population that's not vaccinated, it's a very small portion. And what I did here was I had the staff basically give us the number of new cases per hundred thousand population since we, since we started vaccinating people. And as you can see, the very small proportion of, of rates of infection in, in people who are fully vaccinated and the hospitalizations are also similarly a, a very small proportion of relative to the population that's vaccinated or unvaccinated that have been hospitalized, that are, that are fully vaccinated. So, you know, can't emphasize that enough again, as, as we talk about this, that we, we continue to want people to get vaccinated. Yes.
Mr. Singer, one important aspect of us going forward. What have you heard about the vaccine for the, the under 12, six to 12?
So I.
So where are we there on that?
Yeah. And I think unfortunately, what, what I'm hearing, you know, they, they were originally forecasting September and then maybe November. But I think they're having a hard time getting the dose exactly right for, for that age group. They're, you know, they're not, they're not little many adults. So, so it's, it's, it's taking them longer to figure out exactly how to appropriately vaccinate that age group. So I think we're probably looking at sometime after the first of the year.
And then how about the booster shot? Where are we there?
So, you know, there's been a lot of discussion about that. And I was in the health officers meeting today. And right now, and I want to point out, there's a difference between booster shots and, and the shots that we're given, the third shots we're giving to people right now that are for the immunocompromised. The people that are getting a third shot right now because they're immunocompromised, they're generally getting a shot because their, their body doesn't have the same immune response that somebody who's, 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 who's got a normal, healthy immune system would have. So it's necessary to give them a third shot to get them to have the same type of response and to have the same type of immunity that, that a person with a normal immune system would. So I want to, right now, the only third shot that we're giving, I heard the governor talk today. And, and I'm not sure if he's kind of linking that to saying that people who are in congregate living facilities are, are, are maybe immunocompromised. Because right now, the guidance from the CDC is we're, we're giving a third shot to people who are immunocompromised so that we can help boost their immunity. The, the third shot from a booster standpoint is, is a different thing altogether. And that is if there's concern about waning immunity, about whether you need another dose to, to kind of get your immune system kicked back up again so that we don't have breakthrough cases. And I'm not sure that that's settled at this point. But what I read most recently is there seems to be some question with Pfizer's data and, I mean, not Pfizer's data, but the Moderna data. And most of the vaccinations we did as a health department were with Moderna. And there, there seems to be some issues with that at this point. They were talking about whether you need a half dose or whether the dose would look differently. And, and, and what I just read before I came here was that looks like that's going to be delayed for, for a period of time, making a decision on that. Now there's, I think the Pfizer vaccine, the, the third dose on that is going to be debated in, in late September. So third doses may be available for people who want them that, that are qualified based on what the guidance is that comes out from, from the, from the federal government as far as, as who should get those shots. You know, we're, I'm trying to, I'm trying to dig into the governor's guidance today. But that really only affects people who are, who are institutionalized in nursing homes. So it really doesn't have an impact on our, on our teachers or schools or things of that nature. So it's not real relevant to this conversation. But trying to sort out what the governor said today, just from an informational standpoint is where, where that stands. But for the general public, I, I, I'm not sure that third booster shots are, are going to be coming anytime within the next month or two. We, we may be looking a little further down the road. Because from what I'm reading, we're mainly talking about people who might be at higher risk for those boosters, at least initially. And then we'll have more discussion and figure out where the data goes as far as what's right for, for those extra, for, for that third shot.
And then our educators, most of them received the Moderna shot. So then we would have to wait for then the Moderna booster.
That, that's my understanding at this point. I mean, there's been all kinds of discussions going on about, you know, whether these might be interchangeable or what they're going to do. And, and, and really, until they make a decision, we're, we're kind of, the thing that's really hard for us as a health department, we're trying to figure out how to gear up for this and how to right-size our staff and make sure we've got a location to vaccinate people if, if, you know, the pharmacies can't handle it. We, we ran into a problem recently, and I guess this is a good thing for, for you to know about. And, and this is unrelated to vaccinations, but it's got to do with the testing. And because nobody was really, I, I don't think anybody was anticipating the spike in, in cases that we had. A lot of the pharmacies, we had, you could get tested in just, in most about any pharmacy in Carroll County at the peak of this pandemic. But a lot of the pharmacies stopped doing testing. And a couple of, about a week and a half or two weeks ago, we, we, we were looking at, it was taking like four days and people were having to travel like an hour for, for them to be able to get a test. So the health department's going to be ramping up some, some testing capability, primarily just for people who are sick or in quarantine. And for those reasons, we're not going to be doing it for employment reasons or for travel and that type of thing. Like we, we kind of opened it up to everybody before. But we're going to be doing it through our contact tracing team to try to make sure people can get back to school and back to work. And I want to thank the school system because not every jurisdiction, you know, continued to take on the challenge of doing testing. I think it's really important that we have timely testing available for, for the students so that they can get back to school sooner. And, you know, there, there's all kinds of test-based strategies we're talking about doing to try to get kids back in school. And we don't have to quarantine them as long and, and things of that nature. And it keeps going back and forth on some of these discussions with the CDC. But, but having testing readily available through the school system and, and at the site that they've, they've set up will help. The health department's ready. If, if we have a surge in cases and, and it exceeds the capacity of the school system, we're going to help in any way that we can. But the, the testing capacity, that's the point I was getting to, is the testing capacity in the private pharmacies just really dropped off as, as we hit that low during June and July. And, and not a lot of pharmacies have picked it back up again. So we're, we're finding ourselves as public health having to fill that gap again. And glad that the school system's helping us and, and being able to meet testing needs. But I, I'm concerned that as we, as we get into these third booster doses and, and opening it up to kids and whatnot, that because there's not been a lot of demand for vaccine right now, as we start to ramp things back up, that it might be difficult to get the pharmacies onboard. And we're, I've been having discussions with the Department of Health. And they're trying to have discussions with the pharmacies to make sure that they're ready. Because we're not going to be able to vaccinate everybody all at once because the health department did a portion of these originally. And the hospitals did some, and the pharmacies did some. And there were mass vaccination sites, which I was a little bit miffed about, but, you know, they were there. And, and, you know, so it's going to be, there's all these people who were vaccinated in various spots. If they want to get a, get a third dose, when that's approved, they're going to have to be vaccinated somewhere. And I'm just not sure, you know, we don't have the National Guard anymore that, that are supporting us. We don't, that, I don't think we have as many pharmacies doing vaccines. Obviously, we don't have the mass vaccination sites. So if everybody needs another shot, that's going to, it's going to be a Herculean effort to try to get as many people vaccinated as we can when, when that becomes available. But we're trying to figure out how to gear up for that.
I'm just concerned because I'm looking down the road as usual. And what's our next hurdle going to be?
Well, and let me.
You know, I just.
Let me just throw one other thing out there too. I do want to kind of say that, you know, there was an urgency to get as many people vaccinated as we could when the vaccine first became available because this was helping us to get these numbers down. And, and, you know, based on the slide that's up here right now, you can see how effective the vaccine is. Most of the people who are getting sick are not vaccinated. There are breakthrough cases and some people are going to get sick that are vaccinated. But the majority of folks, it's, it's a, the small portion of our, our population that's, that's not vaccinated, that's the heavy part of the disease burden. But I guess my, my point is, is I don't know there's as much urgency. If, if, if the federal government were to approve a third shot tomorrow to help boost your immune system, everybody has some level of immunity and, and different people's immune systems are going to react differently. And, and some people are going to need a booster more than others. But I don't think there's, needs to be the urgency to get everybody immediately that third shot as there, as there was initially getting people their first and second doses so we could have them fully vaccinated. So I do, from my perspective, I see that being important whenever it gets approved and whenever it's felt that it's necessary and that we try to, try to do, get that, get that done. I just don't know that there's, that there needs to necessarily be the sense of urgency we had when we were trying to get everybody back in school and trying to get all of our teachers vaccinated the first time.
And I think people need to know that we have a central location for testing.
Yes.
Dr. Lockhart, I think that's important that everyone knows that we do have a central location.
Yep, that's what Mr. Singer was referencing. We have a central location, a portable that's been retrofitted at Westminster High School. So it's outside and you don't have to go into the building all prepared. I think we're going to have that functional beginning tomorrow. So we're, we're set to go to, to support any students and staff who, who need testing.
And thanks to all the nurses that are working diligently on this also, because they're going to be in the front line.
And I mean, considering that our, that our kids are the ones that are, that are the predominant number of cases, it's, you know, we're, we're going to need the support. So I'm, I'm glad that you guys stepped up and are helping with that. Next slide. Oh, I'm sorry.
Dr. Dorsey.
I was just wondering, are the private physicians going to be able to administer any of the boosters that you were referring to?
So it's been difficult for, for us to really get, we've, we've talked to, honestly, the, when, when I, when I reached out to the private practices, they said, we'd rather you do it because we don't want to have to deal with, especially with the Pfizer mixing the vaccine and the, and the, and the temperatures it has to be held at and everything else, it was difficult for the practices. We've offered to the private practices that, you know, if they need one vial, it's, the packaging was a big challenge in the beginning where you can only get 1,200 doses at a time. And, and most practices don't need 1,200 doses and they don't have that many patients lined up that they can vaccinate. So we've offered to the, to the practices. And if, if you know anybody that's a doctor and they're interested in getting vaccine, we can transfer one vial and, you know, maybe eight doses or 12 doses depending on the, the vaccine to them and, and to, to have them vaccinate their patients. Because I actually think it's best, you know, it's, it's like, if people call us about testing, I'd rather them go to their doctor if their doctor has testing available. And they, and, and they're dealing with their medical professional that they can trust and they know and their doctor knows them. So we'd, we'd like it if their doctors could vaccinate them. But we've, we've found very few practices that want to take on the, the handling and, and mixing requirements and everything for the vaccine. So we're trying, we're, we're, we're available. And anybody that knows a doctor that might be interested in getting vaccine, they can certainly contact the health department. And we'll, we'll help them get whatever amount of vaccine they would need. But there aren't a lot of practices that have taken us up on, on it at this point. It's been, I think it's just been easier for them to try to refer people to us to, to get vaccinated. So thanks for that question though. It's a good point. This is just our hospitalizations. And each, as we, as I've always talked about, these are new hospitalizations. And obviously, when we were at our low point in, in cases, we didn't have a lot of hospitalizations. We're, you know, we're kind of ticking up a little bit in hospitalizations. It's not putting the stress on the hospitals that we had back during the peak of the pandemic, but they are seeing a lot of patients. Next slide, please. This is our hospitalizations and death by age group. And I know nationwide and even statewide, we're not seeing a lot of hospitalizations of kids still, but it's happening in, in, in larger numbers than we've seen before. But again, it's one of those things where now the, the majority of the cases are in those younger age groups. And, and so, so since, since that's the primary people who are getting the disease, we are, we're going to continue to see a little bit of a higher rate of hospitalizations amongst younger people.
Mr. Singer, would, and, and I know it's not on the two charts, but the, you show nine for the week hospitalization. Do you have any idea, were they all 65 and older? Were they?
No, actually, we're not seeing a lot of, in, in general, the, the hospitalizations are, are winding up in the age groups and it, are, are people in their 30s and 40s and.
That didn't get vaccinated.
Didn't get vaccinated. And, and so we're, we are seeing, you know, I will say that we're seeing some deaths from, from people that are related to COVID. But a lot of those folks, we're, we're, we're having breakthrough infections in, in the vaccine. But a lot of those folks are in hospice and have other underlying conditions as well. So, you know, I, I can't, can't emphasize enough the, the need to get vaccinated and, and to encourage people to get vaccinated. So I get the next.
Ms. Pataglip.
Yep.
Kind of whatever, the, when the governor was speaking today, he was speaking regarding the therapeutic that is being offered in Maryland. Is that being used here in Carroll County?
Yeah, and doctors have a, have the opportunity. And I think it's been, been a lot more, you know, we did a lot of outreach to physician community and whatnot. The monoclonal antibodies you're talking about, yeah, that's a lot more available now. And it's, it's, I think it's, you know, it's helping save people's lives by helping them essentially fight off COVID. And it's, it's being used, yes, extensively. So, next slide. Next slide. I'm not going to, I'm not going to dwell on this too much. We kind of went over all this last time. It's all the CDC guidance for schools and you, you guys have seen it. We, we don't need to dwell on that too much. Next slide. The universal masking thing, we've, we've, I, I know you got people on both sides of this. And I just want to say that back in June and July, I think I mentioned to you, I thought if our case rates stayed where we were in June and July, that I'd be comfortable with, with not having masks in school. And, you know, you've heard what I've recommended to you over the last couple of months, and I'm not going to dwell on that. The only thing that I would suggest to you is MSD has put out their requirement that's likely to get approved by the AALR next week. I mean, that's my guess, is that maybe you talk to MSD, maybe you reach out to them and say, hey, can we set a, a standard that if we get to a, a certain rate of transmission, that we could go back to the mask being optional? And that's just, you know, it's just my suggestion to you as a board. It's kind of, I think when we talked in June and July, I had suggested to you that if we were going to have a mask policy, I would have suggested that we, that we link it to case rates. It might be a productive conversation that you could potentially have with the, with the state superintendent and the State Department of Education that, you know, hey, if we get down to the moderate or low, could we consider making it optional? And, and it's just, it's just a thought I had as I, as I know you guys are struggling with, with dealing with people in the community. And you got people on both sides of the fence that, you know, if we tied this to transmission rates, it might make everybody a little bit happier. Well, might make everybody mad, but at least it's probably the, you know, sometimes when you wind up in the middle and, and a decision makes sense, it's, it makes everybody upset. But I think that's a, it's, it's, it's a relatively reasonable thing to think about and, and to have a discussion about. I just, it's, it's the only thing I could really think to throw in there that's, that's, that's new that could lead to a reasonable thought on that type of.
Mr. Kyler.
Yeah, and, and I thought the same thing, and I, I may reach out to you on that thought because they implied it was going to be evaluated monthly, but they didn't really say how and by county and whatever. The other thing that, that disturbed me in it, if, if the, if the whole idea of it is to keep students in school, I don't understand why the maintenance guys changing breaks need a mask or central office needs a mask, you know, the facilities that have programs for students. Do you, do you support that? Or do you, am I stretching? I know occasionally I stretch things.
So right now, you know, CDC's recommendation is if you're in a place where there, where there are other people and it's crowded. I, I'll, I'll tell you what we do over at the health department because there's not a statewide mask mandate. And so at the health department, we put a policy in place where, you know, we know the CDC is recommending that if you're in crowded places where you're going to be close to other people. And a, a large number of my staff are vaccinated. And, and so I feel relatively safe. But if you're in areas where, where there's, where there's close contact with other people, we require people to wear a mask. If you're in an office by yourself, then we don't. You know, I, I, I don't want to get into what the, I, I didn't set whatever the requirements are by MSD. I just think that, you know, there are certain places where we, we actually tried to set up places so that people could have an opportunity. And nobody, nobody enjoys wearing a mask more than not wearing a mask. I, I get that. You know, and I wasn't wearing a mask up to the point we got, I got to do the right thing. If I'm the public health guy and CDC is recommending if we're at a rate of, of substantial or high transmission, we, we want to make sure that we're doing the right thing and modeling the right behavior for people. But, you know, if there's ways you can mitigate transmission and, and other ways, you have people spread out or they're, you know, they're working by themselves somewhere. In any business, I would, I would suggest to them that, that that's probably okay. And I don't know if you need to get some clarification or whatnot. But it's, you know, the, the main thing that's concerned about is where there's crowds of people and, and, and having high rates of transmission and potentially giving the disease from one person to the other.
It'll be curious to see how 80, 80,000, 70,000, 60,000 in a stadium do.
Well, at least that's outside.
I know, but it's crowded.
I've, I've seen some of the Facebook posts. I've, I've seen some of the Facebook posts, when you look at the, it, it's just, it's a little disturbing when you see, uh, that many people in a, in, in, in a stadium someplace and, and there's concerns about transmission and then, uh, so, I, you know, it is what it is.
Yes, when I saw that picture of Michigan, uh, I don't think they could get paper clips between them.
So, if I can get the next slide please, just a couple other, a couple more quick slides. The total doses administered by the health department at this point is a little over 54,000. And then, next slide. And out of the total population, uh, 63.7% are, are, are vaccinated with at least the first shot. And, uh, we're up to about 60% of the population that are fully vaccinated. Now, obviously, that includes all ages, even, uh, kids who, who are not old enough to be vaccinated. Next slide. And we've, we've, we've talked about this a number of times, our 65-plus folks are real good in vaccination rates, 60 to 64. You, you, you go straight down the line until you get to the, the 12 to 19 are, are a little bit better than the 20 to 29-year-olds. So, um, you, you kind of go straight down the line as, as people, uh, I, I guess they're younger, they feel more invincible. So, um, that's kind of where, where we are with our vaccination rates by age. Next slide.
Do you see that moving much? Are you?
Right, right now, I mean, the demand for vaccine right now is pretty low. And, uh, it, we, we saw a little bit of a surge in demand when, when, uh, cases started spiking up again. But, you know, it's, people have got to make a decision for themselves whether it's right for them. And I know some employers are pushing it. And we're, we're trying to encourage employers to require their staff to be vaccinated or tested. But, uh, you know, it's, everybody's got a decision to make with that and, 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 and what's best. So, next slide. Just reminding people that, uh, we have vaccination clinics, uh, you get on our website, you can register. Uh, anybody that's over the age of 12 can, can be vaccinated. Pfizer's still the only vaccine that's approved for, for 12 to 17. I actually thought that Moderna was gonna be right behind them, but that hasn't, still hasn't happened yet. So, the Pfizer's still the only ones that we can, and we can vaccinate the 12 to 17-year-olds with. Next slide. And we've always got Marcia's pretty picture and the superintendent up there to remind people why they, why, why people are getting vaccinated and encourage people to do the, do the right thing for themselves and for the community. Next slide.
Older and wiser, that's why I'm in that 96% group.
Older and wiser.
That's right.
So, that's all I have unless you all have any questions for me.
Dr. Dorsey.
I have a question. It's probably more for Dr. Lockard or Mr. Streaker. I'm wondering about today's attendance at our schools. What was that like at the elementary? If we have it by levels, that would be interesting to, to note.
I heard, um, from Mr. McCabe right before I took the today, our overall attendance was 96.6%. I don't know what the breakdown between elementary, middle and high was. Equal, okay. So, we're at about 96 and a half at each level, elementary, middle and high.
Fantastic.
Just from a health officer's curiosity standpoint, how is that compared to most first days of school? Any idea? And maybe you don't know, I, I just was curious.
It, it's always in the upper 90s, particularly on the first day of school. I, I'd have to go back, um, Mr. Singer and look comparatively, um, to, to be able to give you a, an accurate answer. It's typically not 100%, um, but it's, it's, it's upper 90s for sure.
Any other, oh, Devanchi.
Well, um, I just know that seeing the data for the surgeon pediatric cases, that's very, very concerning, um, especially for the students that are in our school system. And I really think that we should be taking every mitigation strategy that we can to protect the students, many of whom are unvaccinated or, and or don't have the opportunity to be vaccinated. Um, and I know that we've been talking a lot about the efficacy or effectiveness of masks, but I think we really need to look at like quarantining and the possibility of having all those students be quarantined and the learning loss that comes with it. Because, um, as we saw those, um, since August 30, 50 students in CCPS have been quarantined. So, they've been having to miss 10 days of school. Um, and with the current quarantine procedures, if I'm in a classroom masked, um, and in most of our classrooms with the current attendance, three feet distance, social distancing is just not possible. Um, and so, if I'm in a classroom masked and another student is unmasked and if they test positive for, um, COVID, then even though I took every mitigation strategy possible to keep myself safe, I would also have to bear the burden of that. I would also have to miss, um, those 10 days of school or until I get the negative test. I would also have to suffer that learning loss, even though I personally took every mitigation strategy possible. And I just don't think that is fair for our students, that even if they took all of the mitigation strategies as possible that they could, they're still having to suffer from that. And I just really want to see some board action on that or some response on that.
Ms. Pataglia.
Uh, I was gonna ask if, if we can get clarification regarding what the quarantine is, what we're supposed to be doing, masks, unmask, vaccines, everything.
Well, if-
Get that, so everyone understands what it is.
Here comes Mr. Streaker.
Carl, if you want to talk about that, that's fine and we can tag team it.
Okay. Um, so in general, I mean, there's a lot of different factors and some cases take on a little bit of a unique situation because our nurses get involved in that. And, and while I'm here, real quick, I want to thank our nurses for their hard work and the reason we're open today and, and continue to stay open. They're doing a great job. So, appreciate all the work and, and our leadership in the nursing area. Just globally with, uh, with quarantine in a, in a typical case, um, first of all, students are close contacts. We identify a close contact of a student who's a positive case. And again, there's some nuances about, uh, in the household and a COVID probable, uh, which a probable case is, is a symptomatic student who has a known exposure. We treat them the same. So, if we have a student who's a positive case for COVID, we do, um, we, we develop close contacts that are anyone less than six feet for a combined 15 minutes over a 24-hour period for two days. We identify those students and those students are quarantined. There's kind of three, uh, variations that you fall under that. If you're a vaccinated student, uh, vaccinated students who identify as close contacts, as long as they remain asymptomatic, may continue to attend school, they must wear a mask for the first at least three days. They have to wear a mask for 14 for the first at least three days and then they can test out with a negative test. They can test out of requirement of wearing masks. So, those are for vaccinated students who are close contacts. Again, they have to be asymptomatic. For the second case, that's for asymptomatic, um, students who are unvaccinated. They have a choice that after, it's after seven days, so on day eight, I'm sorry, on day, after five days, they can get tested. If they get, produce a negative test after five days of that exposure, they can then return to school on day eight, but must require, uh, a mask all the way up through day 14. So, those kids can come back on the eighth day after exposure and wear a mask through day 14, uh, if they're willing or choose to get tested and get a negative test. And then some students choose not to get tested. And if they don't get tested, then they're in quarantine for 10 days. And on the 11th day when they come back, they need to wear a mask through day 14.
Thank you. It's a lot, totally different from last year. Dr. Lockard.
Well, I was gonna say, um, the returning with the mask is no different because last year, we just didn't recognize that because everybody was masked. The difference this year is we're not quarantining close contacts of COVID-like illness. Um, we're, we're responding to COVID positive or as you suggested, somebody who's, has a known exposure and is exhibiting symptoms.
Right, that's a significant difference. So, we're no longer quarantining close contacts of symptomatic students.
Now, and the, the other thing that we discussed, I think the Miss Mysteries, uh, comment that, uh, you know, that we're, we're not taking advantage of right now. And we discussed this the last time we had a board meeting is if, if everyone's consistently wearing a, 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 a mask and, and, and that's, uh, in, in place, then the, the distance between, uh, people for, for what's considered to be a close contact in, in a school setting for the students is, it can be cut down to three feet. So, you know, where you might be winding up, uh, quarantining eight or 10 people because of the radius around a, a sick student, um, with, with a six-foot distance requirement, it, you know, you might, you might be down to two or three with a, with a three-foot distance requirement. And that's, uh, you know, that's why I was talking to you about that in August and, and that was my, my main concern was just trying to keep the kids in school and not unnecessarily having to have them home on quarantine.
Mr. Kyler.
And I'm curious, and I don't know how many people saw in the different schools. I heard, and, and that's from students, that it sounds like mask-wearing at the one middle school was probably about 50/50. I'm curious how many kids are wearing masks. And again, if, if, uh, you're, you're three foot, six foot, if, if the, the one that tests positive is wearing a mask and the kids around were wearing a mask, is that taken into consideration or if mask optional with six foot no matter what?
We're all or nothing.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's where the CDC guidance falls to is, is, uh, if, if you don't have a consistent mask policy, you, you can't get the reduction.
Yes. So, even if you're wearing masks, like, like, I won't get into the science, but even if you're wearing masks, it doesn't matter now. And maybe, maybe next week it will.
Right. Mr. Kyler, universal masking is the three feet, not universal masking.
Yeah, non, I, I wondered. And, and does anybody have a feel for how many kids wore masks today, um, in the different schools? Does anybody see enough to tell?
I think it just depends on, on the, the school. Yeah, I believe that's our student-elect, uh, Shrob member. She said 35, 65, 35 being masked. Okay.
So, about a third.
Right. Whereas the elementary school Mr. O'Neal and I were in, Mr. O'Neal and I put it at maybe 80 or 85% of the students were masked. I think it just depends on the school, Mr. Kyler.
Okay.
Um, I went to all three levels and there were a lot more elementary. In high school, there were, there were a few. And middle school, I'd say 50, well, my, I think it was less than, yeah.
I was curious.
More than 50% did not wear masks on that. Devanchi, did you want to say something else?
Yeah, I, I just wanted to sort of continue, um, on what I said before. And over the past year, we've learned how important being in the classroom is for our students and we've learned how detrimental learning loss is for them. And I think we committed that we wanted to keep students in person in the classroom as much as possible in this next year. And I know for many students, I, personally, I, um, have many AP classes and oftentimes missing even one day of the class or missing even one lab, it can put you very much behind in your class overall. And it's very difficult to catch up. Um, and even though we have the Schoology learning management platform, it is very difficult to, um, many students have said that they're, that they're not gonna keep it as updated as they did, like in the last year, that they're gonna focus a lot more on practical, hands-on, um, in-person classroom experiences. So, again, I'm just very concerned about all of that. I know many students are as well. I just want the board to possibly consider some action on that.
Ms. Pataglia.
And I was, I was just gonna say, I'm, I'm glad that this year we, we're no longer doing its, you know, the possible symptom. It's just the actual cases. And I think that's the important part because, you know, you got fall coming around, you got the allergies again, you got, I mean, it's, whatever, kid, you know, chicken on their own spit, I, I don't know. Kindergarters do that very well, I've seen. But I, yeah, I mean, we, unfortunately, I think even Governor Hogan said today, this is something we're going to have to learn how to live with because it's, it's, it's here to stay. It's, it's an animal reservoir, it's gonna keep changing. So, we need to, you know, figure out how to maneuver it a little bit at a time.
Ms. Sebigny.
Um, I think, and Devanchi, I think we're all concerned about that as well. I think that one of the things that we have to recognize is that there are going to be cases, right? Like, whether we have a, a universal mask mandate or not, there will be cases, there will be quarantining. And we need to understand how well-equipped are we to handle that quarantining situation, right? I know that we have the, the quarantine coaches that we put in place. Um, but I think parents also need to understand what the, what the situation is for their kid. If their, if their kid has been sent home on quarantine, how did, do they understand what is, what the, what information is going to be provided for their child? How do they log into, um, the Google Classroom and platforms? And, um, and at what point do we, um, consider, I mean, I, you know, bite my tongue. And, but at what point do you consider, do you have a threshold where if we have a certain number of kids on quarantine, that you consider concurrent teaching or that teachers videotape their lessons and post those at night so that kids can watch them? Or, um, I'm, I'm not saying that, you know, it would look like it did last year at all because I know that that's not, um, it's not feasible. But what sort of accommodations can we give, um, in terms of, you know, virtual, some sort of virtual lessons for the kids that are on quarantine?
Ms. Gate.
So, when a student, uh, goes on quarantine, um, we have a, a quarantine coach in each of the schools that we discussed at the last meeting. And that coach will be in communication with the student that goes out on quarantine and the student's, uh, parents or guardians to let them know, um, how to access the work. As you know, students are already involved in, um, using the LMS, either, uh, Google or, um, Schoology. I know this is the first day, but, um, the teachers know that our students need to be able to use those platforms in order to be able to seamlessly get onto them if they, um, go into a quarantine situation. Teachers also know that, um, they need to make sure that those, um, platforms are updated with, um, current content that is being taught. Uh, some teachers are choosing to videotape a mini lesson of themselves and putting that up on their classroom. Others are putting up other kinds of videos and instructional resources. So, at this point, uh, we've left it up to the teacher's discretion as to what kind of learning resource they want to put up on their classroom that would, um, present the content that students would be missing in quarantine. As Devanchi said earlier, yes, we, we certainly are folk, more focused this year on making sure that our lessons are hands-on uh, for the students who are in the classroom in person. But we also know the importance of making sure that students have access to the, at least the content, um, when they're at home in quarantine. So, that, that's where we are at this point.
And is that for all levels, Mrs. McCabe, where the students will be able to access either the Google or Schoology?
Yes. Now, as far as the, uh, technology rollout for one-to-one, um, student-to-device use, uh, right now, we have, we are at a one-to-one usage for all of our high schoolers and all of our middle schoolers. We will be, um, we will have all of our elementary students, uh, in grades three through five at a one-to-one ratio by the end of the fall. Um, so between now and then, um, we, we will prioritize the students who need to go home, making sure that they have a laptop to go home with. But come late fall, all of our students in grades three through five should have one that they're bringing back and forth to school with them. Students in grades kindergarten through two will be using, uh, laptops, computers in school, but they won't be taking them back and forth from home to school. So, they will be getting information, uh, and learning that they need when they're in quarantine through the coach, through packets, through paper pencil activities that parents can come pick up for them.
Ms. Pataglia.
I, I was just gonna ask, uh, any of the high schoolers and middle schoolers, are the teachers already kind of going through how to navigate through Schoology and Google Classroom? It, just in case something occurs or, you know, the teacher happens to have to be out or anything of that nature?
Yes, our staff knows that that's top priority because if a student goes into quarantine, that's, that is how we will, uh, want them to access their learning. So, our teachers know that that's a number one priority. So, today is day one. Many teachers probably already started that process with students today. If they didn't start today, uh, they'll be doing that before the end of the week.
And it's not necessary also just for them in quarantine. It's a way to access their homework.
All the time.
To review for the, the day, kind of wherever they have a test the next day.
Exactly. Students will be using the LMS all the time regardless of whether they're in quarantine or not. Um, it's where, um, many of their learning resources will be and it's also how they'll be turning work into their teachers. And it's a way that they'll be able to communicate with their teachers, um, pretty seamlessly.
Preparing them for the real world.
Yeah, exactly.
Colleges are going this way. This is how they're, they're submitting their work, workplaces and everything.
Yes.
All right. Uh, Devanchi.
I just, um, as we mentioned before, if we have universal masking, we would have less students in quarantine. students in quarantine. And I really think that we should be trying to work alongside the guidelines and taking the hard way around it. And I just really haven't received a clear response today from you all on that.
Mr. Kyler?
I can give a little bit of a response. I'm seeing, and I don't want to jinx this, I don't want to predict the future, I've seen mandatory mask schools with a lot of quarantines. Again, everybody hates it when I bring up other school districts that seem to be successful. I know a couple where masks are optional and they have very, very few. I think it's going to depend on whether sick kids come to school. I think it's a lot of variables and I feel like, like a lot of things in life, this isn't totally black and white. I think the people on the side that heavily want the mandatory mask, Carroll County Public Schools has been planning for how to quarantine and what the student's going to be treated like quarantine. We're not just saying, we don't give a crap, masks are optional and tough luck. I mean, that's not what's going on here. And I understand your concern. I understand a lot of the students I hear about and their concerns, but I just don't think it's that black and white that, almost thought of a construction term, sorry. I don't think it's that black and white, I'll stop there.
All right, any, okay. Well, I didn't see your card. Okay, Dr. Dorsey?
I appreciate Davanchi sort of pushing the point here because, again, we certainly are concerned about students being in quarantine. And as I have shared in the past, I am certainly concerned about our elementary population that does not have access to the vaccine at this point. And it just seems like that universal masking could certainly help those students as well as special ed students and students with special needs. So again, you know, you're sort of pushing the button there and you're sort of, you know, encouraging us to get into this conversation. And like I said, you know, it just brings back to me the advantages of really going along with the universal masking. Again, I know it's not unpopular, or it's popular with some circles and certainly unpopular in others, but you know, as a school system, I think all along, when you work in a school, you know, you're used to setting the rules, you're used to saying, you know, this is what we do here at this school. And again, you know, you're not given a choice when you come in to say, well, I want to follow your rules or I don't want to follow your rules. No, this is your school and this is how we behave, these are the things that we do here at school. So in one sense, it's not like we're putting anything sort of way out there on people because, again, you know, you're used to having rules at school. And if wearing a mask is a rule at this point, I certainly think that there are students who can certainly abide by that. Again, I'm all for rights and people having rights, but I'm also for responsibilities. You know, sometimes you need to look at those rights in the context of, okay, what are the responsibilities that are associated with those rights? So those will be the few comments that I will share at this point, but Davanchi, you're right, I'm in sort of pushing the button here. And again, I'm sure at the high school level, when you have ninety-minute classes, you know, just missing one, you can really miss a lot. So again, we do have to be concerned with making sure everyone has access to their education.
Dr. Lockard?
So I appreciate all the comments and questions. At the last meeting, the board passed a motion that the system's going to remain optional until such time as AELR meets and subsequently approves that regulation and it becomes then a legal requirement that we would implement, I think it was the next day is what the motion read. At the same time, we're going to be continually monitoring cases in the system and subsequent quarantines. We do have a plan in place, as Ms. McCabe described, that our schools, our principals have spent a lot of time on trying to get up. We haven't even tested it at this point. I hope we don't have to test it a lot, but I do think it behooves us to continue to revisit those numbers because I do think if we get to a place where we have a, I don't know what the percentage would be, then we do need to reassess that current plan and consider alternatives to it. I don't, you know, I don't want to let that go to a place where, oh my gosh, we've got, you name the percent, out on quarantine and we're struggling to keep up with that and our students are missing, you know, more valuable instructional time. So I would, you know, I would suggest that, and you know, I'm going to be constantly updating you with that information, it's day one. And like I said, we've put a lot into trying to get that going. I hope we don't have to get to that place, but I will let you know as, and I don't have a percentage, I don't know if that's one percent, two percent of our student population, five percent, I hope not. You know, we would have to take a look. I recognize, and we've said this all along, the challenge of concurrent teaching, it takes away from both kids at home and kids in person, to no fault of our teachers who are trying to be sort of that two-headed monster, if you will, and meeting everybody's needs. So the kids in the classroom are getting deprived of more hands-on, more opportunity. Kids at home aren't getting as much direct attention. It is very difficult and sometimes it's easier to, and again, to no fault of our teachers, but for kids on either end, either in person or at home, to check out because it's just not as individualized as, you know, a class in front of a teacher. And there's challenges with virtual learning. So, you know, I don't think the answer is to go back to that concurrent model because all that did was, I think, disengage folks and wipe out our teachers. But perhaps there's other things that we can be looking at and thinking about. I know that a lot of our teachers are getting creative with ways to post information and put things there. We're trying with our, the positions that we allocated in schools to connect kids with a real person, to help and support them, to connect them then with the teacher. We're accessing some funds to be able to have teachers who are able to get on with students at the end of the day, to support them individually as well if they are quarantined. So that's my two cents on it.
Okay, Ms. Sevigny?
I just did have a follow-up question. And Ms. McCabe, when I had asked last week about what kind of capacity we had for the quarantine coaches, I know you had said quite a lot, you know, we have quarantine, we have a quarantine coach at every building, but what exactly, these are not certificated teachers, right? These are...
These are instructional assistants.
Okay.
And so, no, they are not, they would not be responsible for the instruction to the students who are in quarantine. As Dr. Lockard just said, not only will the students be accessing the teacher's resources on the LMS and turning in work that way while they're in quarantine, but the coach will also be able to coordinate extra support or tutoring for the students who are in quarantine by finding out what they're struggling with and then matching them up with an appropriate teacher who'd be willing to tutor them after school. So it may not necessarily be the student's teacher who tutors them after school, it could be another teacher in the building who's willing to do that tutoring because we know that not all of the teachers in the building will be able to tutor after school. So, but yes, that will be a big part of what the success coaches do is match up teachers with students who need that extra help.
Okay, so parents should, if their child is sent home on quarantine, they should expect a call from the quarantine coach to work with them directly?
Absolutely, they will be contacted directly by the quarantine coach.
Okay, Mr. Kyler?
One point I wanted to make also, twelve-year-olds and up have the opportunity to get vaccinated, and you're getting a pretty decent percentage in Carroll County, like you said, they're doing better than some of their older people, but that option is there. And I think, again, and what Ms. McCabe said, what Dr. Lockard said, and what you guys said earlier about quarantining, everything that's been set up for this year, home and hospital, the quarantine stuff, is to get a student back in the building as quickly as possible. I think CCPS has been very proactive with testing, I think you mentioned earlier about the testing. And I think a little bit, and like Ms. Pataglia said, I think one of the things the governor said, we've got to learn to live with this. And I think, and I personally thought before, mask optional was the best way to do that, and I think it was always the intention. And Dr. Lockard's been very proactive with weekly and more often than weekly updates to us on everything. If the situation changes, then we need to adapt to it. But it seems like nobody wants to give it the opportunity. Like I say, again, I've seen mask optional schools that have the one system similar to one of our high schools had twelve positive cases and one person quarantined. And so it can work, but I don't, will it here or not, I don't know, but I think we ought to get that opportunity to see. And I think a lot of people want that opportunity.
Davanchi?
Well, Mr. Kyler, do you know what the positivity rate was for the high school that you've mentioned? Because I do think that that does make a difference.
They're about five miles from here, so very similar. And I've said that for a year and a half.
Oh, I'm sorry, very similar to ours. And the positivity, I think Mr. Singer said before, right now, I think the cases is probably a better indicator than positivity, or you feel either one?
I've always said that the positivity rates, and I still feel this way, it's a factor of who's getting tested and who's not. The case rates are definitely, I think, much more indicative. I mean, the positivity can be influenced by, you know, if an employer's requiring somebody to get tested every week, that's getting counted in there. So every time that, you know, if Dr. Lockard didn't get vaccinated and he's required to get tested every week, he's, every time he tests negative, that counts in the positivity rate. So there are some things that might artificially deflate the positivity rate, but there's also things that might artificially inflate it. It's a, I think that's a, that number to me has just never been, the case rate is the case rate. We know, if we get this many people sick, we know how many people we have sick, and I just think that's the best indicator of where the levels of transmission are in the jurisdiction.
And their case rate was very similar, and one of the things that I think drove our decision here, Carroll County spiked up a little bit now, Maryland's one of the best states in the country, Carroll County was one of the best in Maryland, they've spiked up now, but, and I'm hearing a couple scientists that I put a lot of respect in, thinking right around September first to the third, they were hoping Delta was peaking. Now, they could be wrong, but when they predicted, they predicted some of the peaks earlier and hit it pretty well. So, yeah, and I understand what you're saying. It's, and unfortunately, that's what you see on the news is some of the horrible states and how they're doing. Well, those case rates are, I think, I think this school system, if we had case rates like that, we'd be looking at it differently.
Dr. Dorsey?
Well, I just wanted to comment concerning Dr. Lockard's comment. I mean, I'm glad to hear that there's going to be some flexibility in thinking and maybe some instructional decisions being made based on the numbers and the data as we move forward. So again, we're showing that we're open to making some other decisions or having some other plans in place to assist our students based on our data at the time.
And Davanchi?
And to Dr. Lockard's point, I fully recognize that today's the first day of school and that we don't have a lot of data from that. But again, I'm just a bit disappointed that we aren't aspiring to work proactively rather than reactively to the whole quarantining and LMS situation.
All right, any other comments? Thank you, Mr. Singer.
Thank you.
Now we will move on. Thank you very much. And I don't know, Ms. McCabe, if I thanked you too, coming up there several times, thank you. Dr. Lockard, now we will move on to pillar one update.
Thank you. Last year, in order to streamline meetings, we began presenting the monthly strategic plan updates in the form of written reports. As you know, the strategic plan defines a monthly schedule for updates based on the four pillars. September is an update on pillar one. The report is provided in the agenda packet. Mr. Anderson and other staff are available for questions that you may have.
Hi, Ms. McCoslin. Anybody have any questions or comments?
Is there no, like, presentation or we just launch right into questions?
Launch into questions, right? We listen as a report.
Yes, it's a report now.
Should I prepare myself, launch?
There you go. Yes, Ms. Sevigny?
Hi, Ms. McCoslin.
Good evening.
I just had some, I actually had a fair number of questions on the pillar one update. There's not actually any real data in here for us to look at, and I understand the situation is that we didn't have, you know, the standard testing at the, you know, the end of 2020 or at the end of the 2021 school year.
Yeah, so the data table that you have there for MCAP is back to 2018-19, which is, you know, the latest of what the state provided us.
Is there, are there results that we can be looking at, though? I mean, there were year-end grades that we had for the end of this past school year, there's summer recovery learning, there's CBAs, CBAs and SRI scores that we could be comparing?
Yes, we can certainly pull that data for you, both with local assessments and as well at all these levels, actually, with some of the benchmarks that we do have in place from the data in Performance Matters.
Okay, because I think that we, and I'd like to understand, you know, when we're going to be planning to do our testing for this upcoming year so that we at least have a benchmark moving forward, right? And I know that we did a lot of testing at the end of last year to determine which students were going to be invited to the summer recovery learning process and that we had benchmarks and things that we were going to be testing for and checking at the end of summer recovery learning. So I'm assuming that that's, the information probably isn't ready yet, but...
Dr. Lockard was going to make a comment.
Well, can I piggyback that too? Along with that, the fall testing, the spring testing, the difference in the amount of time out of class and the computers available, but, and we talked about that a little bit in the agenda meeting, it looks like some aggressive fall testing and some follow-up spring testing, and I just wonder if you guys could comment on that?
So I think as far as the summer recovery data, that's data we're going to present at the September 23 work session meeting, so we are working on compiling that. Did you want to speak to MCAP or did you want me to speak to that?
Well, I'll let you speak to that, just wanted to make a couple of comments. So all the data that you're talking about, Ms. Sevigny, is important information that we absolutely take into consideration. We used it to help us gauge, you know, invites to the summer recovery, we used it to then look at what are some of the, you know, some of the students we need to have in the fall for extended learning. We looked at all that data from last year as we looked at groupings for classes for this year and instructional levels. The strategic plan that we reviewed back in June and then adopted recently has these data points in it. And I know it's kind of frustrating that we don't have anything from last year in terms of state assessments and some of the more comprehensive ones that we've listed. So, and in terms of, in the packet, there's a list of the, of when those assessments are going to be given to Mr. Kyler's point, the state is requiring us to provide some fall administration so they can get benchmarking data points, and then again in the spring as the actual administration, correct?
Sure, so the fall administration of MCAP is really going to be a shorter version of the test, and it's really kind of an extension of last school year's testing window. Some places decided to give a spring administration where they could wait and give an early fall administration. Current third graders will not test in the fall in MCAP. Current third graders will not test in the fall in MCAP. But the other grades will test in that condensed version in the fall of last year's grade. So current fourth grader will actually take the third grade MCAP assessment. At the high school level, students who took English 10, who took the science course, the biology course, and Algebra I, if they sit for the shorter fall administration, they don't have to pass the test, they just have to sit for the test and pass the course in order to meet graduation requirements. Students this year who are in those same courses at the high school level can sit for the fall administration, pass the course, and meet graduation requirements. We do have communication that's ready to go out to parents regarding the fall testing window. That's ready to go tomorrow. Just so everybody, all the parents and communities and teachers are clear on the testing schedule at every grade level.
Ms. Pataglia.
I'm glad you said that because there was actually a couple of parents I've heard from when they were looking at their kid's schedule, their junior, senior years, and they're going, I thought they had this test and they didn't take it. Oh my God, does this mean that they can't, won't be able to graduate this year or next year? What is happening? Did they forget it? Was it not put in the system? Was it lost? You know, so I'm glad that you brought that up because I think that is something that is very important for the parents and students to understand that, you know, it's going to be all right, we're going to figure it out. But I do appreciate that being said to the community.
Sure.
Anyone else have, oh, Devangie.
Is there any update on advanced academics and GT?
So Sharon Lilly is our new advanced academic GT supervisor. She's currently filling two roles, but she is working to transition the program forward based off of much of the conversation we've had over the past two years with Mr. Barnes, our former supervisor. So we are transitioning with that, but pushing forward.
Okay. Thank you.
Dr. Dorsey. Well, when I was looking at the data in that Figure 1-1, some of the analyses had been shared, some of the insights were listed. And I was looking at that bottom bullet where special ed, the two-plus races, and I guess it's the EL learners are three areas in need of academic improvement. When I looked across for the white student population, I saw that they were first in just algebra, I don't want to say just, but first in algebra. I guess that, is that eighth grade and then third in math, eighth grade, no, maybe the ELA, I'm sorry, maybe the algebra is for 10th grade, and math for eighth grade, and then third grade math. But they have, there are a lot of boxes there, too, that, you know, really aren't top of the state kind of levels. So, you know, certainly we don't want to exclude that population as well. And you were just talking about the 21, 22 assessments. So again, students are going to be taking the assessments for their prior grade level to get those results.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Dr. Dorsey, I'd like to say, I'm sorry, President.
Go ahead, I'll ask.
I just wanted to add that, yes, we have the same concerns that you have, Dr. Dorsey, looking from a state of equity. So we should always be looking at, at the current time, what is the data telling us? What is the story telling us? Always asking ourselves, what group of students are doing well? Which group of students are struggling? What are the barriers? What improvements do we need to put in place? Actively getting numbers into names and hopefully using our data to be able to assess what grades as we can see, but also what schools are doing well, what teachers are doing well, what certain populations of student. We really do, we shouldn't be happy until all our babies are doing well. And so, yes, that is what we encourage through the Performance Academy, working with our equity liaisons and with our principals in regards to the fact that it's fluid, our most vulnerable population is fluid. And so at any times, we can see spikes in certain groups, increases in improvement in some groups, decreases or concerns in other groups. So we have to just always make sure we're having that conversation and looking at the data and figuring out what is the story telling us so that we can address the needs of all of our students.
Yes. The first thing that I looked at this was when I saw, and I think this is one of the most important, is in third grade, ESOL is 14th. So that is one area that we have got to improve on. That is, we're doing an injustice to those students. With Pam Esther and her teachers, are they going out and teaching these students individually? I mean, is that how we're doing? Is that, that's what's supposed to be going on, correct?
Yeah.
Oh, now we get it. We got everybody up here.
Yeah, that is correct, Ms. Herbert. And per our agenda review, I submitted information today upon your request. I provided each resource teacher what school they're assigned to and the students they'll be working with.
All right. Yeah, because that, you know, that really concerns me because, as I said last year, when I was substituting at Manchester Valley, I sat in a class and watched this poor little girl not be able to communicate with anybody. I couldn't even help her. I know a little bit of Spanish, but it wasn't, like, I was...
It's a really good point because as you look at that ESOL population, as they progress through school, they do exceptionally well as they get into higher grades. So the services that we're providing are showing a positive result. But when you have little students, and I can speak from experience of having 28 different languages in one of the buildings where I was a principal, and fluent in all of them but 27, it was amazing to see the growth. I'm barely fluent in English, but it was amazing, it was amazing to see the growth in just a year, those little ones. I mean, we're talking about third grade. But Dr. Dorsey and Ms. Vigney, I know we've talked about this data as well. You know, Carroll County Public Schools is an amazing school system, and we are ranked number one and number two. But if you break this down, and the reason why we broke this down for the board is so that we can see how we're doing in comparison to our colleagues across the state. So I agree with you. I mean, another thing that really stands out is our fifth grade ELA, 12th. I mean, that's pretty close to 14th. When you look across, we have different outliers there that, as far as I'm concerned, we should be in the top three of the state in every single area, considering our demographics, considering our size, considering our socioeconomic status, considering the support we have from our community, our business partners. So that's why we presented this today. We presented, in June, we presented the most recent Pillar One pieces. We just approved it. So I didn't want to put you all through that again, but I think the team, what the team was trying to showcase here was that, yes, we will have MCAP now coming forth. We wanted to remind the board of where we sat. And Ms. Vigney has been clear, Jason, can we begin to break this data down with all those identifiers? The answer is yes. And that's why we set it up like this, so that we can now, when we start to take the assessment again, we can break on our data to see how we're doing with proficiency levels as well as how we're doing comparatively with our neighboring counties. And so that's why we did it this way.
I just know how important it is that they all need to be reading on level in third grade, and that's a good basis for any education here in Carroll County. Dr. Locker.
Right. The other, the other piece as we dive into this kind of data is, you're going to find places where that number's not where we want it to be in terms of ranking. That also drives systemic decisions about curricular implications. So we might be able to hone in on something at a certain grade where we see we're 12th or 10th and go, why is that so different than all the other grades? Are we missing something there? Is, does the, does our curricular scope and sequence align with eventually what they're going to be assessed on, we want to make sure we're not missing anything? Is there professional development? Are our teachers in that particular grade need to better teach or instruct or provide better resources for our teachers? So there's a lot of things to look at there. By and large, there's a lot of successes in that data, but there's also places that allow us to really peel some things back and take a look at that.
All right.
And Dr. Locker, do you have a feel for when that data will be available for us to take a look at? And I appreciate the additional detail for 2018, 2019, because this is where the issues pop right at you when you look at it in this way. But we've seen the 2018, 2019 data on many occasions, and now it's like we really want to understand what was the learning loss this past year? What was it in 2020? What was it in 2021? And what do we really need to focus on in the coming year? So we need to be able to see the more recent data as soon, like, when can we start diving into that to understand where our biggest holes are?
No one wants the data more than we do, right? So once we get that, we'll be sure to provide that to the board. In fact, I've had several people reach out to me recently about our summer recovery data, and we are in a place now, and I was back there working on it, where we, I can tell you right now publicly, that we've seen tremendous growth as it relates to those students that took part in summer recovery for the entire time. That is, they took part in the pre-test as well as the post-test, which was something that we saw as, one of the most salient aspects of the whole program is to show our measure of productivity and holding ourselves accountable. So on the 20, is it the 21st or 23rd? The 21st is the CNI. On the 23rd, we will be sitting down with the board and showcasing all the growth that we've seen at specific grade levels, so we can go ahead and see the return on investment that we've put forth over the summer based on the learning disruption. As far as the fall assessment, where we're doing the half the items and doing the grade level before, I can't give you a definite answer there. I'll try to find out and ask more questions, but Ms. McCabe and I just sat on a meeting where they gave us just the brief overview of what it's going to look like. But as far as getting those, that return on those, and it's really for scaling the items for the, for the spring test takers, that's why we're doing it. As far as getting that data, I can't give you an answer there. But as you saw in our work session as well around the strategic plan, you know, and as we reported out in January of last year with Pillar One, we do have measures, our local measures, showing that kids are progressing. In fact, in some cases, our director said, it's surprising to see how well our kids are doing, even, even in this type of environment that we're in right now. But we've used that data. We used that data last year for tutoring, we used that data for summer recovery, and we're using that data now, which we'll also be discussing on the 23rd, for our ELO program, which will start on September 27th.
And we should be able to compare our local assessments, though, right? Over, over the years? Because I totally understand that, you know, MCAP has not been available.
So here's, yeah, you're right. So as far as, like, you mentioned CBA or RI. So the issue there is that there was a significant portion of our population that wasn't sat in our classrooms, and they'd have to take that. So there was, as Ms. Herbert made me put a couple asterisks in the strategic plan, that there was a lot of kids who didn't take the test in the spring because they weren't there. And so to compare that data, you know, it's probably not the best decision right now, but what we'd like to be able to do is we can start to do what we've done in the past and looking at maybe first quarter data in comparison to years prior. But I can tell you honestly, the last 18 months or 16 months have been very difficult to do any type of comparison. We do have strong linear relationships between our local and PARC, but we don't necessarily have strong linear relationships between our local and what's coming next, if that makes any sense. So we are in a place right now, and that's why we gave you the data that we did, that's why we held suit on Algebra I, because we gave you, I think it was 27.5% of our students passed Algebra I, but they didn't take PARC. So, and that's our goal in the strategic plan was both. So we're kind of trying to put it together for you the best we can to show you that we're looking back at a baseline, we're looking at a level set where we compared, not necessarily with proficiency levels, because it's going to be a different test, but how we compared in the state.
Anything else? Mr. Kyler, did you have, okay, Dr. Locker.
Right, I was just going to, thanks. I was just going to remind everybody, we were at that point with PARC in 2018-19. That was technically the last administration of that. And I guess it was 1920, in the spring of 20 was supposed to be the, the assessment administration that would create the baseline and all of the cut scores for what's proficient or however they categorize that. Remember, we had switched to a report card where all sorts of factors, access to a well-rounded curriculum, attendance, there was all sorts of pieces that we had gone over and heard sort of ad nauseam in some of these meetings. And a lot of those, most of those measures had stopped. We built them all into the strategic plan in certain places where we could continue to monitor that. So the fall administration is what they intended to do back in the spring of 20, right? Yeah, to get some cut scores for what they'll deem as proficient, right, or not. Yeah, okay.
Mr. Kyler.
And I'm curious, I guess Ms. Herbert first mentioned the two-or-more races. Some of the things have changed in how these groups are split, too, and I don't know whether that would help or make it more complicated, but how big are some of these groups? How much does a handful of students skew what happens in an individual group? And I know particularly, like I say, the two-plus races, I think some of those kids aren't being put in that category the same way they were four or five years ago. I think that's gotten different, which is fine, but we ought to know that when we're looking at how they're performing.
Yes, and there's a lot of intersectionality with that also, Mr. Kyler, in regards to how kids are reporting as two-or-more races. And so I can't give you the percentage of how much that representation is, but I do know that as we look at each individual group, as I stress, I think that we have to always realize that our most vulnerable population is always changing and expanding, especially during this time. I'm very interested in how our students are going to fare with our upcoming test and assessment that will lead us to figuring out what we need to do to best service those students. So I do agree with you. I can't give you a number, I wish I could, but yes, it is a concern, and we do know that each one of those groups that are represented desires and needs our attention, and the needs that each group have different and differ from each group and how they're doing. And so, again, it will guide us with what we need to do curricularly, instructionally, as well as how our teams, our leadership administrative teams come together and figure out plans of how to provide services to these students.
Dr. Locker.
Jason, what's the... It's 3.89% of our students are two-or-more races. That's on our strategic plan, so I just had him pulled up.
And then also, Jason, what is the N that MSDU uses? Is it five or more students? Right.
That's what we've used.
Right, so to your question, Mr. Kyler, in any particular school, if one of the, you know, groups that we're looking at here is, is small, greater than five, you know, two or, one or more kids can make a tremendous difference in the results as opposed to when you're talking about an N size of, you know, 500.
Yeah.
And Mr. Kyler, that's why it's important that we always stress that we are changing these numbers into names. Two or three kids, if I have the names of two or three students that I can advocate for to make sure that we're giving them the support that they need, that can make a difference. So again, what is the data telling us? Who are our students? What do we need to do to make sure we're supporting them?
Thanks, guys. It's about 955 students to your question. And again, you look at a lot of our student groups, you're looking at similar types of numbers, our African-American student population, I think we're under 1,100 African-American students in our county. You know what I mean? So when you're looking at our performance rates, they look very, very good, and we are doing well. But it's also, when we have a smaller contingent, as you were going down the road there, Mr. Kyler, it can be really easy to change it in the positive or the negative.
Any other comments? All right. Thank you all. And now we will move on to the school construction report.
Okay, board members, this is the monthly school construction report. I believe Mr. Marx is in the house.
Yes, he is.
For any questions that you might have.
Just going to say, Career and Tech is looking beautiful.
Yes, Mr. Marx, I did have a parent or two contact me about parking for students. What are we doing there for Career and Tech?
Well, we've met with, of course, Mr. Bogr over Westminster High. We've had many meetings about this, about shifting students more towards the stadium lot. That's what we've done. We've been monitoring that. In fact, we drove by this morning multiple times to make sure there was still adequate parking, and there was plenty of parking.
And we're okay then with the Career and Tech students also?
Correct.
That's great. I just, you know, you hear inklings here and there, you don't know, so that's why I am asking, and here comes Mr. King.
Yes, we're also, the Carroll Community College is helping us out with the Career and Tech.
Okay.
Yeah, that's related to development. We just got 100 more spots from Carroll Community.
That's fantastic.
Ms. Donovan's working really hard to get the shuttle going back and forth. They have some kinks to work out, but they're confident they're going to meet the needs of almost all their students that really need to drive.
Well, that's great, because, you know, and it was a concern, and they were just genuinely concerned that there was a problem, and I said, I've heard nothing about... about it." And then all of a sudden, then I did hear a lot, you know, so thank you all very much for taking care. I knew it would have to be fixed and I knew you guys are very capable of doing it, so.
Yeah, actually, I just heard a couple of things last night about that and I was like, "I wonder if it has to do with the construction?" They're like, "Yeah, that's what we're told." I'm like, "Well, then now you're going."
Yeah, you knew.
But I'm glad to hear something's working.
It does, and our numbers of, of contractors is, is going to be morphing as we go through the different phases. And, and we're going to be constantly changing things. We have some other ideas on some other things we can do with contractor parking. And we'll, we'll see if we need to implement some of that.
It's a process and I thank you, you know. Mr. Kyler.
Two questions and, and I'll, I'll just hit them both. Career and Tech, how are we doing schedule-wise? Is every, because I know it's getting critical because of the timing with students in the building now. And then, similar but much earlier, East Middle, how are we doing with rolling out a word of contracts and getting people able to order materials and stuff?
Well, on Career and Tech, we are on schedule. We started the roofing today.
Okay.
They, they delivered their materials yesterday with all the tractor trailers and got their insulation there. So we're on schedule with Career and Tech's first phase. That's a two-year phase. We won't need to go inside the building yet to start changing the puzzle until we finish this first phase. So by this time next summer, they're moved in and instruction's happening at this time next year. So, but we are on schedule. For East Middle, we're looking good right now. The contracts are being released from the CM. Had, had a good meeting with them today and we're moving right along with that. We're hoping for our grading permit in October from the county and seems like we're on track for that right now.
Any other questions?
Well, I was just noticing for East Middle that again, the City Planning and Zoning Commission, we thought they were going to be.
That's tomorrow.
Talking about it last month.
Yes.
So now it's.
They were. We had to move it to this month.
Okay.
It had some complications with that.
Because it was too close, I guess.
Yeah, and, and we're okay with that. I mean, we were fine with moving it to this month and we meet tomorrow evening and we're looking forward to that presentation with them, with the Planning and Zoning Committee of Westminster.
All right, thank you. And now, Dr. Lockard, we will move on to the COVID-19 physical report.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Herbert. Now that we're a couple of months into the new fiscal year, Mr. Hartlove has reset and now started to add to the fiscal report. You'll notice the reflection of the summer recovery expenditures in that report. And Mr. Hartlove is here for any questions that you might have.
Ms. Sevigney.
Mr. Hartlove, I think. Just one quick question. So, so most of these expenditures were for the summer recovery learning and is this close to what we were expecting those expenditures to be?
Correct. We actually, the budget, the 2022 budget had in for summer learning recovery, I believe, 4.5 million. So all of this, other than that six, the $58,734, that really wasn't included in that number. So it looks like we're about 4.3, 4,350, and we budgeted 4.5 million.
Okay, great.
And that was.
And all federal.
All, yeah, right, that's all.
All federal dollars, yes, yes.
Right, and a pretty good guess to make on our part based on about how many kids do we think will.
Right.
Will show and, and teachers that we need.
Right, and that'll inform what we do this fall, this spring, and then again, next summer.
Okay, thank you. All right. And now we'll move on to action items. I need a motion for the approval of Carroll County Health Department Contract Vision and Hearing Screening Follow-Up.
So moved.
By Ms. Pataglia. I need a second.
I'll second.
By Dr. Dorsey. Dr. Lockard.
Okay, board members, each year we provide vision and hearing screening for students by working with our partners at the Carroll County Health Department. This is the annual contract for those student services, which is part of a cost-share agreement with the Health Department.
Comments, questions? All right. Then I call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It was passed unanimously. Now I need a motion for the approval of a word of bids.
So moved.
By Ms., Ms. Sevigney and seconded by Ms. Pataglia. Dr. Lockard.
All right, board members, this is the one and only item on the award of bids, wall wrapping services for the food service program. This contract allows Ms. Sarno and her team to purchase promotional items as needed throughout the year for such things as like wall and floor graphics, which promote the, the school meals program, healthy eating choices, et cetera. The food service program buys these materials as needed and the cost comes from the program fund.
Comments? What, Ms. Sevigney, sorry, I didn't see it.
Oh, that's okay. I did just have a couple of quick questions about, like, do we have any feel for what amount of expenditure this is?
Chris.
We don't, but I can tell you, at, at this point, we have a healthy, the fund, the food service fund balance is, is very healthy. And this goes actually back to a plan that was made 10 years ago. We're trying to, now that we've kind of righted the ship and we are, we are a solvent food service operation, which we've been for a number of years now, trying to really go to the next level and try to work on, on, on participation, the number of students that are buying lunches, making the, the, making the areas look more like restaurants and more appealing to, to students. So it's, that's really where we're, where we're going with this. As far as cost, I think it's going to depend on, you know, what ideas they have at various schools, you know, what, what they're going to be doing at the various schools. So I don't have a specific answer for you, but it's, as Dr. Lockard said, it's all within their fund balance that they, they've accumulated and this just allows them to have a bid that they can go to when they want to do those types of things. So like the van they recently procured, they, they put these, all the advertising on the side to, to make it more appealing to students for their summer meal program and so on.
Okay, so this is more of a one-time purchase or maybe once every couple of years?
Yeah.
If it's not an annual expenditure?
I think Ms. Sarno is looking at schools one, kind of one at a time. And she's going in, looking at them, looking at what equipment they have, looking at what, you know, kind of where, what it looks like visually, and then kind of putting in the types of things that would make it more appealing for students visually. So it'll, I think it'll take place over this year and maybe bleed into next year a little bit.
Mr. Kyler.
And this is a piggyback.
Yes.
Correct. And, and I think, I heard this before, she'll throttle this based on how her fund balance is doing as she looks at the individual schools, correct?
She's, yeah, she's got, she's all working within the self-supported program. We're in, we're in very, we're in a very healthy position. So we're feeling like we're in a good position. This is an opportunity to try to really improve the program now. That's where the, she's trying to take it to the next level. And we're in a good year this year because all, all the lunches and breakfasts are being covered by the federal government. So that's really, she's trying to take advantage of this opportunity, get kids in, get them used to eating the lunch, get them liking the lunches and the breakfasts so they'll stay on after that, those dollars go away.
Dr. Dorsey.
I was just going to say, it'll be interesting to see what the participation will be like for our school breakfast and lunch program.
We hope, we hope it's good. It's a great opportunity for kids. I mean, that's if you put a plug in for, you know, get your breakfast and your lunch, it's, it's, it's available to you. And it's, this year, it's free.
Are we actually tracking that?
Oh, yeah.
So even though kids aren't having to pay for it.
Oh, yeah.
We're still tracking how many students.
We have to track because that's how we get reimbursed.
Okay.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Hartlove. All right, I call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes unanimously. Now I need a motion for the approval of the Family Life Committee Selection Guidelines.
So moved.
By Ms. Pataglia, seconded by.
Second.
Second, oh, yes. Mr. Kyler, thank you.
Dr. Dorsey didn't give me a dirty look.
Okay, all right, okay. All right, Dr. Lockard.
Okay. Staff has solicited feedback from the board. They're seeking approval for the new appointment process for members of the Family Life Committee as detailed in the agenda packet. Ms. McCoslin is here for any questions or clarification you might have.
Ms. Sevigney.
Hi, Ms. McCoslin.
Hello.
I, I appreciate the, the revisions that were made to this from, from last month. I do have a couple of additional comments and, and requested changes, because this is up for approval, so.
That's correct.
Does it make sense to kind of go through and, and ask the questions and maybe then see what we're willing to?
Sure, absolutely.
Okay.
Sure.
Under responsibilities, I think one of the, one of the items that we should have there for, there's one through five, it should also include, you know, uphold current Board of Ed policies.
Okay.
Because we are actually, we do have an abstinence policy and we are a risk avoidance state. And I just want to make sure that we're addressing that within, within the committee. And under number five, it says submit written reports of decisions to the Board of Education for Action. I know that we had talked about this last time, that it's, this, this group is going to submit recommendations to the board for approval, not, not just, they don't, they don't vote on the final curriculum. They, they vote on the recommendations to, and then the board votes on whether we approve those recommendations.
So could we change?
Yes.
Decisions to recommendations?
If we change it to submit written reports of recommendations to the Board of Education for decision, I think would be the.
Got it.
Okay. So those are under responsibilities.
Yes.
Under membership, I do have some concern, and, and I know, Davanchi, you will, you will certainly have some comments about this. I do have some concerns about the, the student membership on the board with there being two, because this is a committee specifically designed to have parents making decisions, family decisions for appropriate curriculum for their students. It, it is, you know, there's, there's very sensitive topics, very intense topics and discussions. And it's mostly impacting, I mean, there's more impact on the elementary and middle schools for this committee than there are for high schools. So I, I don't know that we necessarily need to, but I, I would like to say that if we did have a student mem, if we did have a student representative on this committee, that there would maybe be, that there would be like a Health III requirement for the students. So if there's someone who had either, you know, registered in Health III or had completed Health III, because they have a relative interest and knowledge in, in this field of, of health, that that would be something that I think worth considering.
Okay.
Davanchi, I don't know if you want to address, you have comments. I have, I have additional pieces.
Okay.
Well, I just want to address that. I think that this committee is, as it said, to ensure the members of the community are consulted about the policies that are made. And I think that students do, are part of that community overall rather than just only parents. And I agree that there should be a high school representative, because even though that it's largely dealing with elementary school and middle school curriculum, these students, they've gone through the school system and know what that curriculum looks like, know their, have their own experiences with it. I would personally like to suggest that we keep it as is so that we have a greater diversity of opinion, because I know that Health III oftentimes is one not always offered in all of our high schools because of, because of just scheduling conflicts. Not, not many students often sign up for it or want to go up to that level. And, but I still know that students, there are many students who are very passionate about the topics and are very involved and have very relevant opinions that are backed up by research and that they're very knowledgeable. We could definitely consider doing an application process where students submit what their qualifications are, like their resume, why they're interested in this. I know in the past, the representative is selected through CCSJA. And our CCSJA president last year, Emily Kim, she served on this committee as a voting member last year. So I definitely think that it would be beneficial to have two student reps on, on here, at, at most two. There doesn't need to be two. As I said, last year there was one. And that, it would be beneficial to do sort of an application process, so we're not really limiting the students and the membership.
I, I, I would like to keep it to one, but I do agree with the application to the Board of Ed process that, you know, if it, if, if there were someone with a Health III, you know, interest, that, that might be something that would kind of sway it in their favor.
Are you comfortable saying recommend that they've had Health III instead of make it a requirement and make it a?
That recommended that they, that they've at least completed Health II and, and maybe recommend a Health III.
But are, are you saying Health III isn't offered in all of the high schools? Or it's not available?
Oftentimes there are scheduling conflicts and it, it's not one of the most popular classes that is in high school. So oftentimes, if not enough people sign up for it to take it in a semester, then the class is axed altogether for that year.
Any other comments?
I do have some, oh, not on that particular issue.
Okay, I was just going to say, I'm, I'm with, I agree, we need one student and it's going to be difficult to get them with Health III, and I think that is a great idea, but still do a recommendation, go through an application.
So just to clarify, I want to make sure I heard, heard this correct.
One.
One student representative.
Yes, it was find that way, we had it.
Okay, with an application process.
Yes.
And recommended that they complete Health III, but not a requirement.
Yeah.
Got it.
If possible, yeah. I think that's important, because this is parents making decisions about their kindergarten or first grader, and these are very sensitive subjects. And you're talking about their children. Ms. Pataglia.
I was gonna say, even if it's the nursing program potentially at Career and Tech.
But we're doing.
Do you think something like that would?
No, because this is family life. This is totally, this is not the same, correct?
Correct.
Right, yeah, yes, it's not the same. You're, you're doing a different curriculum then, yes. Mm-hmm. Davanchi?
And if we do have one high school student that's going to be part of this, I would suggest that it not be the student member on the Board of Ed so that we get a greater diversity of opinion.
Oh, yeah, that's, mm-hmm, okay.
So a member that is, other than the student member of the Board of Ed. So currently, the student member can sit in on the meetings and participate, but they don't have a vote, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so I think we should keep it as that, so that we have a greater diversity of opinion for this council.
You're saying, strike that last raise.
Yes.
Got it, thank you.
Strike which last raise?
The stu.
It may include.
Which may include the student member.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yes, she wants more diversity, yeah.
Okay.
Allow someone else to have a chance.
It says it may include the student member of the Board of Education. It doesn't say that it has to be the student, right?
But what, what sense is it?
Right.
Oh, yeah, but you don't, yeah, it always may, that's true.
So we can have another student be involved, which I think is a great idea.
Okay, but then would the student rep still be allowed to attend the meetings?
Yes, I think that's how it currently is too, right? That I, as a student rep, I'm allowed to attend committee meetings, but I'm not allowed to vote.
You don't have a vote.
In them, correct?
Well, I think the way this is currently written is that the student members would vote, right?
She said, if she wasn't on the committee, could she still attend and not vote, if she personally?
Like, you're saying you always have that, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
But if we did want to do two high school students, then I would think it would be beneficial to have the student rep be mandatory as one, and then another high school representative be mandatory for the two voting members. I just think it's really beneficial to have a greater array of student opinion, especially on topics like this, which very directly impact us students, especially family life and human sexuality, which a lot of us students are very knowledgeable, knowledgeable about. And we, well, not necessarily knowledgeable, but we, greater worldview of it, especially in, in today's world. And we have a lot of issues and concerns with that too, that need to be brought up.
I do understand that, but as a parent, this is very sensitive. And I do, yes, teenagers are very worldly on this, you know, and, you know, and I'm, I'm saying, I, I do understand that. But we're talking about parents that are having kindergartners and first graders and sensitive discussions. Dr. Lockard, how are we doing?
We're doing fine.
He's looking through.
Some information.
Yeah, right, okay. So, we are at.
She's got more.
Ms. Sevigney, no, we got to finish this up first. So are we going to do one high school student enrolled in Carroll County Public Schools? And then, then the student member of Board of Education can also attend.
Can also attend.
Okay, all right. Let's move on, Ms. Sevigney.
Okay. And then item I, I believe it's still under membership. So item I, it says one representative of the Rave Crisis Intervention Services of Carroll County. I don't think that that should have a standing seat for this particular group, because I think violence and, and prevention is a, is a different. and, and prevention is a, is a different group of folks that address those topics, right? I mean, I think if, if that wants to be, you know, the, the one, so there's a item C up above that says one healthcare professional employed within Carroll County, if we, if the rape crisis person is the one that wants to go under that category, that's fine, but I think that we, we definitely need an SRA certified individual as, as one of the standing members.
Okay.
So that, that's where, that's where I would tend to put it?
Davanchi?
So normally, what type of contributions would the representative from the Rape Crisis Intervention Services be able to offer at the committees?
That's a great question, of which I don't have an answer for you.
Right, that's why I was saying, I think that those are, those type of issues would be dealt with in a, in a different forum.
Different situation, yeah.
Because I definitely know that even in Health I, we often have a representative come into our classrooms from the Rape Crisis Intervention Center once or twice and give us a presentation on all of that, so I know that in all of our high schools, we do have a partnership with that organization where they come in, so I don't know, they would be beneficial to this conversation too.
So you would like me to remove I, as you see it fall, would, that person could fall under C?
I think that person could fall under C if we thought that that was the best choice.
Yes.
But then if we changed I to be, there must be at least one representative that is SRA certified.
Okay.
It could be an employee, it could be a, a community member at large. Okay, and then under, hold on a second, so duties of the officers, three C, so it said submits approved meeting minutes to voting Board of Education member who will share with other Board of Education members, I think that's fine, but I think we also need to say that the recommendations will be submitted to the board for approval. And then under.
Excuse me for a minute, Ms. Savigny, what did you just say, that the board would have to approve the minutes? No, no, no.
No, and just that any recommendations would be submitted to.
So you went to, you were at three C, right?
I was at, I guess this would be three D, right, so the recording secretary would have, would have the recommendations, and those recommendations would be submitted to the board for approval.
Submit the recommendations to the Board of Ed, okay.
And there were some formatting issues with numbers under meetings, I fixed that.
Right, okay, gotcha. And under, it, it's actually, not item six, but it's numbered, number six on, on this page that I see, so the presence of a majority of active members shall constitute a quorum, should that be voting members? I'm not sure what the.
A voting member, yes.
A voting member.
Yes, mhm.
And then I wasn't sure exactly where this would go, but we're, we're talking about the meetings, they'll be governed by Robert's Rules of Order, you know, how far in advance you have to publish a meeting, but if the, the agenda would need to be published at the time that the, the meeting invitation goes out, right, like you don't want folks coming to a meeting not understanding what the agenda is ahead of time, right?
Yes.
You need to, you need to be able to be prepared for the discussions that, that you're planning to have.
Maybe they could be sub items under number one, where it talks about the committee shall meet four times a year.
Okay, I think that makes sense, I, I was trying, there was, there was something in here, wasn't there about? Maybe not. Okay, yeah, I think that could probably go there.
Mhm.
Okay, and then I, I did want to ask an overarching question of, where is it covered that staff are adequately trained in, in sexual risk avoidance versus risk reduction per our policy?
You mean within this? Can you, I'm sorry.
I'm not sure that it's, that it's necessarily addressed within these guidelines, you know, it wouldn't need to be addressed within the guidelines, right, as long as we have an SRA certified individual on the group, but I think that we probably need to take a look at that, because I'm, I'm not sure that, I'm not sure where that training happens, and, and how many of our, of our educators are actually trained in that, you know, in, in SRA versus risk reduction.
Mhm.
So that, those were, those are my adjustments, so I guess, should I make a, a motion to amend?
Yes, the, the, these.
Okay, so then I will make a motion to amend the responsibility section where we add uphold current Board of Ed policies, change number five to be submits written reports of recommendations to the Board of Ed for decision, under B, membership three B, that says one high school student enrolled in a Carroll County Public School, it is recommended that, that student have Health III, but not required.
Did you also say it would be submitted for approval, or they all are?
I think they all are.
They all are, so that you don't need to say that again.
Yes, again.
Okay.
And then we need to remove.
And then remove the Rape Crisis Intervention Services standing seat under I, and add an SRA certified individual.
Mhm.
And adding three D to say recommendations will be submitted to the board for approval, and I guess it would be item one B, that the agenda must be published at the time the meeting invitation goes out?
Under meetings.
Under meetings.
Meetings, and then we have to correct at six, instead of active, it needs to be voting.
Right.
Correct.
Okay, so that is my.
That's the motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Kyler, okay, Mr. Kyler, all right, all right, Davanchi?
So the application for the student member of this committee, will that be, will that go through the board or through the Health Office that we have in CCPS?
We do have a technical solution, I'm working with Amy Whitson in tech services right now, we have an online application already developed, we can develop a, a student one, it's a very short form, that we could put together, and we could have all of them together, and that they would then go to the Board of Education for them to, to look at each application, pull, and then make a decision.
So are all committee members who apply assessed by the board in the same way?
No, I don't think so.
I think it is the five appointed members.
Yeah, we.
And the twenty parents and guardians who will apply from those regional areas, feeder schools.
Because I think it would be beneficial, there is a Health sort of section of the Curriculum Department, correct, that deals with like family life and sexuality, that the application goes through their department, then possibly the board per se?
I think, yeah, the last time, so when we met before, when it was up for discussion, I believe what we were talking about was having a technical solution, which Ms. McCausland's been working on with Technology Services, where we would have a, an advertisement on our webpage, and anyone that was interested in being a participant or a member of this, because we've heard from the community that there's several folks that, that want to be a part of this committee, we want to be as transparent as possible and give everyone an opportunity to serve, and so with these guidelines now, folks can go ahead and submit their application electronically, and as Ms. McCausland just said, we'll make sure that the board members have, you know, a compilation of all the different applications, and then the board can determine who, who the members will be.
Just, my concern a bit with that is that all the other stakeholder groups, other than the appointed ones, they don't need to go through the board for approval, but the student member does, so the student, student member, they are a very big stakeholder in the school system, similar to the healthcare professionals.
So again, that would, that would be, we'll, we'll work whatever the board pleases, whatever they're, they're looking for, we can certainly do that, if we want it to be something that's done in a synonymous type of fashion, where we're going to go ahead and have all students submit an application, just like our family members, then we can do that, it's up to the board how, how that, how, how the board wants it to be done.
So Davanchi, are you suggesting that the, the student member goes through the, the Health Curriculum Department rather than the application process?
Well, an application process through the Health Curriculum Department.
Okay.
Okay, so.
Because for the other committees, which do have student members and representatives, I know that we are trying to have that be more application based, and as far as I recall, those students don't need to, those applications don't need to go through the board for approval per se, where the board looks through all of the forms that are submitted.
Because you're saying in this particular instance, it's a student, right?
Yes.
That's going to be working underneath a staff member, just like they are in the classroom, but now it's the supervisor, associate supervisor, those students would submit their applications to be selected to be on this by the Health Content Supervisors, rather than the board, but everyone else, families would go through the board.
Yes.
Excuse me. There you go, I don't know.
Can you hear me?
No, let's see if you, okay, I'm, I'm, I can hear you, but I don't know.
I think what needs to be understood is that we're still dealing with adults versus students.
Yes.
And we need to have the board make the decision.
Right.
You're still providing, even though it's a committee where a student is coming onto the, onto the committee, you have adults who are in charge of this, and you're just wanting to get a little input from the student.
Right.
I think the way you have it set up is fine.
Yes, with the, yeah, okay, so you'll take the applications, the board will make the decision.
Yep.
Okay, all right, thank you, thank you, Rochelle.
So are, are we going to vote with the amendments then, so we can finalize?
Yes, yes, so we're, we're getting there, we're getting there.
I did want to make one other, just, Mr. Kyler just pointed out, under membership number one, is that it, that would actually now be thirty-two instead of thirty-three.
Got it.
But the way you have it worded, a maximum of, so you're changing that maximum number now, because of that one to two? Because, yeah, two to one, right, okay, all right. Is it that number, or didn't we also take I up to C or whatever?
No, we just, it was a one-for-one swap, so we, we took out Rape Crisis Intervention Sir, and said if that is the person that they choose to fulfill three C, that's fine, but then replace that with a, an SRA certified individual.
So it's being replaced with someone?
Right.
All right, I call for the vote, all those in favor of the amendment, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, it passes. All right, now we need to go on to the whole, total approval of the Family Life Committee selection guidelines. Davanchi?
So all in all, how will the student member be appointed on this committee? I know we have this discussion right now, but in conclusion, will it be through the Health Department or through the board?
Through the board, our attorney just said that.
Yeah.
Yes, through the board.
Okay.
Okay, all right, I call for the vote for the approval of the Family Life Committee selection guidance with amendments, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes unanimously. All right, now I need a motion for the approval of the Carroll County Public Schools negotiators.
Move.
So moved by Ms. Pataglia, seconded by?
I'll second.
By Ms. Savigny, this time, okay.
All right, board members, each year under Maryland educational law, we enter into formal collective bargaining with the five employee representation groups in Carroll County Public Schools, and in September of every year, we bring you the list of employees in the system, from which we select specific team members to rep, represent you in the negotiations process, as we do each year, we include those names in the agenda packet for your approval.
Comments, questions? All right, I call for the vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Now I need a motion for the approval of appointments.
So moved.
By Dr. Dorsey.
Second.
Second by Ms. Pataglia, Dr. Lockhart.
Hey, board members, I have three recommendations for approval of appointment as outlined in the agenda packet, first, recommend Ebony Nelson to School Psychologist in our Student Services Department, recommend Julie Nguyen to Supervisor of Human Resources, and Curtis Pierce, who currently serves as our Coordinator of School Security, to Acting Supervisor of School Security, those are the three recommendations for approval I bring you this evening.
Comments? All right, I call for the vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes unanimously. Now I need a motion for the approval of the Personnel Action Items.
So moved.
By Ms. Pataglia, seconded by Ms., Dr. Dorsey.
Okay, board members.
Dr. Lockhart.
Yep, this is the final Personnel Action Report in preparation for the school year, which is just underway, and includes likely the, the final twenty-five new hires, among a, a few other things as outlined in the agenda packet.
Mr. Diaz, how many more, what are we lacking, or?
Guaatche.
Do we need, areas do need to be filled yet? I know we need bus drivers, and what else?
So, good evening, board members, and Commissioner Weaver, we have just a handful of items primarily in the area of Special Education.
Okay, still.
So we were able to start, we have one elementary position, that was, is being covered by a permanent sub, the school's working on that, also a music vacancy, again, being covered by substitute, in the area of Special Education are some open vacancies, probably speaking in the areas of speech language pathology and occupational therapy, they're looking to get coverage for those, and, and then one or two at, at Career and Tech, so an engineering position in Allied Health, so these are unique positions that are difficult, and some of them became vacant very, very close to the start of the year.
Okay, all right, well, thank you. Dr. Lockhart, were you going to say something?
Nope.
Okay, I thought I saw you, any other comments? All right, I call for, call for the vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. All right, now I need a motion for the approval of Personnel Transaction Items, I did that one, okay, right, we need to move on to?
Eight G.
Eight G, okay, I'm, okay, eight G, yes, I was correct, I need a motion for the approval of Personnel Transaction Items.
So moved.
By Ms. Pataglia, seconded by?
I'll second.
Ms. Savigny, Dr. Lockhart.
Board members, a couple of Personnel Assignment Changes recommended to you this evening, first, recommending Christopher Hines to Acting Principal at Mount Airy Middle School, second, Christine Hill to Assistant Principal at Sykesville Middle, and finally, Noah Scholl to Acting Assistant Principal at Westminster West Middle School, these three positions sort of backfill some late dominos in the system.
I am very happy for Mr. Hines going to Mount Airy Middle, Ms. Savigny?
I think the, the Mount Airy community is going to be very happy about that, that change.
And there'll still be some transition time here coming, so that won't be immediately, but very soon, we'll start transitioning.
Okay, so that, that was going to be my question, was, you know, how, where were these folks today, right, on, on the first day of school, and how will that, how will those moves kind of transition?
So today, these folks were all at the schools that they have been assigned to before now.
Basically.
Yes, so they, they communicated this afternoon with their school communities to let them know what was going to the board meeting tonight for approval, and so they'll start their transition now, so we have a transition plan for each and every one of them that they made with the administrators that they work with, and with their school level director, and those plans span the course of two to three weeks, so that they can spend time with not only the person that they'll be working with in their new position, but they also want to get the person that will be taking their role acquainted with the environment and the school that, that they'll be taking over for them, so it won't happen immediately.
Okay, do, does this leave a hole anywhere?
No.
It doesn't, okay, so the, everything will be completely filled at that point?
Yes.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? All right, I call for the vote. All right, I call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes unanimously. Now I'd like, I need a motion for the approval of ratification of master agreement with Carroll County Education Association. Dr. Lockhart.
Oh, we need a motion?
So moved.
I need a motion, I'm sorry. So moved, by Ms. Pataglia.
And I'll second.
I need a second by Ms. Sevigney.
Okay, board members, I'm pleased to announce that after the mediation stage of impasse with Carroll County Education Association, that we were able to come to a mutual settlement with our teachers association. The agreement, which calls, among some other language items, a step plus a 1.75% cost of living adjustment for CCEA, that's been ratified by CCA's members, and now we bring it to you for ratification from the board.
Comments? Ms. Sevigney?
Um, I did just want to say out loud, like for, for folks who may not have read through it or may not have seen the information, just that, that this is basically equivalent to a step plus a 1.75% COLA.
Correct.
For all members of CCEA. So that would equate to about a 4.35% increase on average, so about 2.6 for a step on average.
A little lower?
Two, 2.5? Okay.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Hartlove. Anything else? I call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes unanimously. Now I need a motion for the approval of transfer of school bus contracts.
So moved.
By Dr. Dorsey, seconded by, by Ms. Pataglia. Dr. Lockhart.
Okay, board members, this is a routine transfer of a school bus contract from one of our contractors to another. After staff review these, they come to the board for your action, and they're, this one is detailed in the agenda packet.
Comments? Pretty self-explanatory? I call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes unanimously. Now we will move on to our discussion, and nine A is Community Advisory Council. Do we have anything on that?
That's typically the, the open-ended sort of conversation around the community advisory. Ms. Scaddis, you all haven't met yet, have you?
Okay, all right, then we'll be calling on you for information. Thank you. All right, now we'll move on to nine B, Review of Policy JFE Programs for Pregnant and Parenting Students/Review of Administrative Regulations. JFE Programs for Pregnant and Parenting Students. Dr. Lockhart.
Right, so I'm going to ask Mr. Streaker in a nutshell. I believe there were a couple of minor changes in Maryland Senate Bill 438 and House Bill 401 that we needed to update into our administrative regulations and policy, correct? Yes, Dr. Lockhart, we, and again, because it's policy, we bring this to you for review, and then regulations are for information, and then at the next meeting, we will be finalizing. So pretty much everything that, that we're updating is already operationally in place. So I, it's really, we need to make sure we have childcare centers. I mean, we do not have childcare centers. We had childcare centers, we, we would be in a different place with the House bill, but that impacted schools that have childcare centers as part of their, I guess, part of the school, they had childcare centers. But we also need lactation areas for students, which is something we've always accommodated for, for students. So there really aren't any operational changes, just some language changes in, in the policy and reg that we're taking to you.
Okay. Comments, questions? Thank you, Mr. Streaker.
You're welcome.
All right, and now we will move.
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, but, so does this, this goes out for, this will come back in October for approval?
Because it's a policy change, we, policy's always gone for thirty days, and then by law, we have to put these in place. But as a formality, I think the policy has to sit for thirty days before it's acted on.
Okay. Thank you. All right, now we will move on to number nine C, Proposed Twenty Twenty Two, Twenty Twenty Three School Calendar. Dr. Lockhart.
Okay, board members, each September, bringing you a school calendar for your consideration. This is for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. If you'll recall, the last cycle of this process, we spent a lot of time and vetted a, a lot of feedback that the board considered as they constructed the student calendar for the current year we're in. So in bringing you a proposed calendar, and again, this will, this is discussion this evening for whatever level of discussion you'd like to have. It does sit out for feedback for two months and comes back in November for approval. In doing so, I tried to take all of the decisions of the board from the previous iteration of the calendar and align with, with what the board was interested in for the current calendar, starting after Labor Day, maximizing as many full weeks of instruction as possible. We were able to build in four snow days to the calendar. The, 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 the structure of the calendar looks very similar. The only differences for the board's consideration is an additional professional development day in the middle of the school year at the semester change, and two additional days at spring break for your consideration. The last day of the student school year is proposed to be Thursday, June fifteenth. It builds in four potential snow days, so you can back that up if we didn't use any to the previous week. And the first student day is proposed to begin after Labor Day on September sixth.
Uh, Devaun, I, I'm sorry, Devaunchee, I couldn't see your card there, okay?
So I know last time, we heard a lot of feedback from our Jewish community here in Carroll County. And I also know that up until three years ago, I believe, we, as a system, used to offer Rosh Hashanah and Yom Kippur as school holidays. And I just wanted to advocate for Jewish students again, to possibly say that I think that we should incorporate those two dates. Yom Kippur is October fourth in twenty-twenty-two, and Rosh Hashanah is September twenty-sixth in twenty-twenty-two. I think we should incorporate, incorporate, incorporate those two days into the student calendar. They are two of the most holiest days for the Jewish community here in Carroll County, which is pretty sizable in certain parts of the county. And it's a day where students attend prayer, where they attend services that basically take up the whole day. And missing, I've heard from many students that they're having to make the choice between attending a service on the holiest day of the year and going to an AP class at the high school level. And of course, as we know, even missing one day in those classes can be very difficult for our students.
Who are those dates again, Devaunchee?
October fourth is Yom Kippur in twenty-twenty-two, and Rosh Hashanah is September twenty-sixth.
Ms. Pataglia?
Um, I know, you know, we've already started receiving some emails, and I just, I do want to make sure we reiterate to the community, you know, first of all, what holidays we have to close for by COMAR regulation. You know, we don't close for December twenty-fifth because we feel it's more important than someone else. It's because it is a COMAR regulation that we have to close on certain holidays. We also only have a hundred and eighty days. The community wanted to go to school after Labor Day, and the governor has made it known, we have to be out by the fifteenth. So it makes things very difficult, especially when, again, Labor Day, you know, is the fifth day of the year, or it gets later. It, it makes things harder and harder. And I'm completely, you know, I completely am very sympathetic to other religions, I really am. There's three thousand and some other religions. I'm completely sympathetic to it, but I, you know, we're not, we are not pinpointing one religion over another, and I want to make sure that is known to the community. That, that is not what is happening here.
Miss, anybody else want to make a comment? Ms. Sevigney?
Um, I just wanted to ask about, so, and this is connected, I'll, I'll get to how it's connected, but the, the four emergency closing days that are built into the calendar. I know we had talked about, like, when we have issues with fitting everything in, that, you know, we've, we've seen with virtual capability the, the last year that, you know, depending on the number, we would want to have a couple of snow days potentially, or inclement weather days for kids. But once we got past a certain point, could those be virtual, right, so that it doesn't keep extending the years? So you could almost guarantee the end of the year would be?
The fifteenth.
Yeah, on the fifteenth. And then, so if we reduce that to three emergency closing days, and then i- is that a possibility to add, you know, Yom Kippur back in, for example?
Dr. Lockhart.
So I still have not received word from the state on whether we can, or whether we can have approved virtual days for snow days, once we're back in, in session for all, all students in person. And the, as I think about it, last year, when we had the infrastructure in place, and in fact, there were a couple times when we were already in all virtual, we only maybe had some small groups coming in. That went on, and the state had already approved that. Logistically, it is a little bit more of a challenge to, at five AM, when we're not expecting bad weather, to say, okay, everybody, we're going to be all virtual today. Teachers may not have brought their, their equipment home, their laptops and whatnot. We are going to have, we may have some students that may have connectivity issues if they're not constantly on, like we were last year. So there's, there are some challenges with that, and the first being, I still don't have MSDE approval for just toggling back to that on a snow day.
Good, thank you.
Can you remember what the COMAR holidays are?
I don't, you probably have it in, in your.
Okay. Sometimes I get asked this, so I've learned to open it in advance.
Thank you.
But one time I got it right by.
Hello, I just want to note, it's not COMAR, it's the state law.
Yeah, it's section seven, one oh three of the state education law. Thanksgiving Day and the day after, Christmas Eve, and then until January one, Martin Luther King Junior Day, President's Day, the Friday before Easter.
Oh, a little slower there, Mr. O'Neil.
So Thanksgiving and the day after, Christmas Eve through January one, Martin Luther King Junior Day, President's Day, the Friday before Easter, and the Monday after, Memorial Day, and any primary or general election day.
And there was an election day in here, correct?
Yes.
Yes, and Dr. Lockhart pointed out that January comes in on Sunday, the first, and Monday is the second, so.
Yeah, I had, I had proposed Monday, the second, being part of the, the break there, just, just because of the extensive, sometimes, travel that happens and people getting back, but that is not, according to what Mr. O'Neill just read, a ma, a state mandated day.
Yes, because we have opened on the second before. You know, you know, I appreciate the comments concerning the Jewish holidays, because again, I think it's important for us to keep those in mind as well. And I can certainly understand the challenges of, of saying, okay, it's going to be a snow day tomorrow, so we're all going to have a virtual day. I understand at the last minute, sometimes it's hard to come up with those kinds of plans. But I know sometimes you're in a weather pattern where you can sort of predict, okay, we are going to be out. You sort of know a few days ahead, maybe. So anyway, you know, maybe some flexibility there. And I guess the only other thing that I had looked at here, I've added too many other circles and lines here, now I can't find what I was going to say, but, oh, I think December twenty-third is actually a Friday.
Mr. Kyler?
December twenty-third is a Friday, and that, it would be a two, two hour and forty-five minute early dismissal.
So we have it as a Thursday, so it's a Friday.
I'm sorry.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, it's a Friday, right.
Last year, when we talked this, I looked at Bonham County, who has a larger Jewish population than Carroll. I don't know if this is feasible. They, they do that day as a professional day. You, you had one for the fourteenth, I don't know whether having it that much sooner in the middle of the week is a thought. And then, Dr. Lockhart, can you kind of share with us the timeframe of this and share with others? Because really, I don't know how much we want to manipulate this tonight, other than discuss it and wait for public comment, and then do changes based on that, correct?
Right, you're going to get lots of feedback over the course of the next two months. As it relates to the October date, it's typically the second Friday in October is the, the MSEA, the Maryland State Education Association Conference. And we're, we're also trying to accommodate our employees there, and, and we hold professional development, because we'd have teachers out on that day, attending their state conference, so. Yeah, so to your point, Mr. Kyler, we don't have to make any decisions here tonight, just for discussion, and we'll get that feedback.
So since that Fri, that December twenty-third is a Friday, does that change your count in any way?
Mm-mm.
Okay. Just that.
It's just listed wrong, yeah.
Right, okay, that's all right. I was just thinking out loud. Ms. Pataglia?
I was just thinking, I mean, if we decided we can come back that Tuesday, you know, we could potentially look at Yom Kippur or one of the other holidays.
Are you talking about the December date, or January?
The January date.
If we come back Monday, the second.
Right. Because, you know, again, you know, we heard from the community, after Labor Day, they want more spring break, and we have to be out by the fifteenth. So, you know, it's, it's tough. I mean, it is very hard, you know, and when we have certain requirements we have to meet.
Devaunchee?
So is it very unpopular to start the week before, in the last week of August? Because I know it's not the most ideal, but I think we would be able to fit in those two days. As well as, I know this has been a point that's been brought up by the past two straws before me as well, but the schools that do semesterized AP classes, I think having that extra week of that second semester would help them prepare for the exams in May a bit more.
Go ahead, Ms. Pataglia.
I was going to say, we, I just said that we heard from the communities over and over, they do not want us to start before Labor Day. We actually did a survey, I believe, two years ago, and a lot of it was, do not start before Labor Day.
And we did just do a great discussion about that, and we decided that we would not start school until after Labor Day.
Yeah. And it was a big push from the governor, too, and the comptroller.
Mm-hmm, yep, that's very true.
And do we know what the, what the AP testing dates are for?
It's the first two weeks of May.
First two weeks of May?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
We might want to consider going back January for the second. That could be one option.
Another thing to consider is, you know, with four snow days built in, you, I don't want to try to predict the weather.
Right.
But you'd have to use nine days to get out of that week. In other words, even if you use nine days, your, your last day would be of snow, nine days of inclement weather, your last day would be June sixteenth for. of inclement weather, your last day would be June 16th for students, because you have four built, you know, you'd have to back up four and then use that whole week. So, actually, I guess it's eight. Yeah, eight days, which would be a pretty significant winter, probably.
Wait, I'm misunderstanding. So, if there's four days built in, if we use all four days, doesn't that take us to the 15th?
Right, if you use all four, one, two, three, four, that takes you to the 15th. I'm sorry, what did I say? Eight, five, five would keep you there.
Five, okay.
And if we take, and if we do start January 2nd instead of being closed?
Right, that buys you a day.
Yeah, it does, buys us a day.
That's, that's probably when the road will take you to New Year's.
So if we don't use any other snow days, we get out June 9th. If we use them all, it's June 14th, 15th.
June 15th, right.
And I'm seeing a lot of the bees that are burying in ground. I've always heard that that means that's going to be a bad winter. That's this year.
This year, because we only have three days built in this year.
I know, I know. Never good.
So, what exactly are we saying we want to send out for public comment? Are we sending it out as-is and get public comment? Or did we want to send out as Schedule A and a Schedule B and C?
That's up to the board, however you'd like to do it.
Do you want to send one out?
I think the last time, what did we have, like, two or three different versions?
Right.
Well, we had a, right, we had a committee work, and then we sent out different modifications of what they had done.
Mr. Kyler?
I think as-is, and we've discussed it, and we'll get comments.
We can go from there.
Okay.
Okay. So we'll send this out for feedback as it is, and then, we won't give you all that feedback all at once. At the October board meeting, we'll give you electronic copy of feedback, so you can catch up with it, and then, prior to the November meeting, we'll give you the rest. Good, Ms. Gaddis? Good.
All right. Okay, now we move on to 9D, FY '23 capital budget, and FY '24-FY '28 capital improvement program request.
Okay, board members, each year, the CIP process begins. It's hard to believe we're back at that time again. And we present a proposed CIP for the discussion for the board. There will be a public hearing between this meeting and the October business meeting, and I would recommend that we set a time limit for our September work session, on September 23rd, and hold it that evening. We typically only have a handful of people come for that public hearing for the CIP. So I know we meet with the commissioners in a joint meeting on September 23rd at 3:30? 3:30? We've tentatively scheduled our work session on the 23rd back over here to begin at 5:30. We could say we'll have a public hearing on the CIP at 7:30. If that meets the board's, we're going to be here, we're all going to be here, and I don't think we're going to have 200 people come for the CIP hearing, although, maybe we will now that I said that.
Now that you said that, because...
You jinxed us.
Anyway, think of, if that works with the majority of board members, we can do it that way.
So start at 3:30 on that day.
Is this going to be discussed on the 23rd with the commissioners?
Yes, we certainly, we knew that CIP was going to be a part of it, and I was going to go over a couple of these things, Mr. Weaver, but, John?
What? You said what I was going to say.
Yeah.
I mean, we have to align...
That's right.
And that's, I think, this is an important step, where we're going next.
Absolutely. So in my notes, I have that we'll have that public hearing, come back to the October business meeting, where the CIP comes back for board action, and then it's submitted to the state and county for funding consideration. And the highlights in here, the FY '23 request includes the third installment of state funds for the Career and Tech Center, the remaining state share of construction for East Middle. We talked about the variance, we discussed with the board at length at the August meeting as it relates to the East Middle project and the rising costs of materials. And the last thing in my notes was, I think that the joint meeting would be an ideal time for staff to share and get your feedback. So, you're a couple steps ahead of me.
I just have, just one question, one comment while we're on items that you're looking for. And make, we have had a chance to meet with the Secretary of, oh, the General Services. And the federal government has tremendous amount of surplus items, computers that are three years old, but some of them never been used, anything you can imagine. And he was begging us for nonprofits, which the school would fall into, "If you have any needs, to get in contact with him." And, believe me, they have anything you can imagine. He said, "It's out there, we can get it to you, it's no cost." But, this is...
Can I get the contact information from you after the meeting?
Yeah, I'll get it, give it to you. But, it's just, you know, the school system has the same needs as a lot of everybody else has, buses, vans, whatever, they will give them to you at this time. So I'll pass that information.
I was going to say, they got buses, come bring them on. I mean, I know we've...
Well, sure, full buses, but...
Need a driver to go with that.
No drivers, just a bus.
Still plugging busters.
I'll get that to you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And again, as far as computers and technology, I mean, we've always had specifications that we've had to follow, so I would think those are still in place.
Right.
So hopefully it would be something we could use.
President Herbert, might I just clarify briefly those three items that Dr. Lockard mentioned? The, we're requesting the third installment of state funds on Career and Tech. There doesn't appear to us to be any reason to not expect that. They've followed through, and in my knowledge, they've never not continued to follow through once they've been committed to a project. The second bullet refers to the other type of state funding, the new funding under the Bill to Learn Act. We have every reason to believe that that's lining up. We've had certain commitments, and they're still ironing out the process. That involves both the traditional state agencies and also the Maryland Stadium Authority. So, Mr. Prokop, Mr. Kane, Mr. Marx continue to work through that process. We expect that to come true, and we know that the amount we were seeking is almost all there in total. And then the last item, I wanted to comment on the 5.2 million you see there, because it goes back to the August board meeting, when you approved the guaranteed maximum price construction award. If you think back to that meeting, we talked about the bid results, we talked about various stages we had been through to try to narrow that number down. That was, I think, almost 13 million at one point. And some of those things, we just moved forward with. We talked about value engineering or redesigning certain aspects of the project to lower money. Those would just happen with your approval that night. We talked about some changes to some of the project accounts that were within your control. I think the owner's contingency in furniture and equipment were two that I can remember. Those things are within your control, and so when you made those decisions, we can make those happen. What that left was the 3.2 million, that's the number we were kind of honed in on that night, the 3.2 million dollar variance. So that 5.2 represents that number. It also represents the 1.8 million that we had suggested as a possible solution could also be obtained by transfers within existing capital project accounts. So the 5.2 that you see on the screen is the 3.2 difference that we were at the bottom line on, but it also includes the 1.8 million in capital projects. And I think you also approved the one-add alternate for the storage shed, the storage facility, so that little bit of, you know, I think it was a couple hundred thousand is in there as well. So, they're not separated here, because those things have to be approved by two bodies. So, you know, if you and the Board of Commissioners agree to move that strategy forward, then the capital project transfers would have to come here for your action, and then eventually for the Board of Commissioners' actions as well. But that's why it's a higher number than the final number that night. I'd also say that, as you know, we work with the county staff all the time in an ongoing way. I know Mr. Zaleski and his team have had a chance to digest that. They may have either feedback or different thoughts on how best to approach that overall strategy. And so that's one of the reasons Dr. Lockard thought the September 23rd joint meeting was a great time to put this on the agenda there as well, to talk about that strategy we laid out for you to consider, and get you and your staff's feedback on what approaches you would see fit. So, thank you for letting me have that little bit of time. I wanted to try to make as clear as I could that 5.2 million you're looking at. And Mr. Kane's here, if you have any real questions about the nuts and bolts of the plan.
All right, Ms. Sevigny.
No, I was just going to say, thank you, Mr. O'Neill, because that was certainly my biggest question, was why 5.2? I was thinking it should have been the 3.2 plus the 175, so...
We talked long and hard about how to make something that's kind of complicated a bullet, and at the end, we just said, "We'll leave it like there," because that's mechanically how it would be until those transfers would happen, if they happened.
Ms. Pataglet, you're on.
Ms. Sevigny, you mean?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. I tell you what, it's been a long day. Yes, it has.
Mr. O'Neill, I was just looking at page six of the CIP, which is where we see the actual, like, charts of the state request and the local requests. And so I see the 5.2 there, right? So, we would certainly have that discussion with the commissioners to make sure they understood why that number was 5.2.
Correct, yeah. I think we would probably just sort of present what we presented on August, at the August board meeting here as a starting point, because that had it, you know, that had the breakdown from the bids to the final number, and then, we could have that conversation with them. And I assume Ted and Roberta would be able to be part of that discussion as well, to offer any insight they have. And I think another thing, Ms. Sevigny, to remember back from the August meeting, is that doesn't need to be reconciled at the, you know, at the August meeting, or the September joint meeting, or even the October board meeting. If transfers are part of that solution, then that could happen anywhere during the project construction timeline as well.
Okay, thanks. And then I guess, you know, as we're looking at the projects that, as they're laid out, and what do we think is the likelihood of the state funds actually coming in for these other projects after Career and Tech and East Middle are underway or completed?
I would say eventually, but Bill works much more closely with the folks at the IFC.
So, based on where they are now, and based on kind of discussions over the last fiscal year, I think it's a long shot that they'll get funded in '23. But, when the General Assembly meets in the spring, you never know. Sometimes they decide, they may decide to increase the capital budget. They've been talking about increasing the traditional CIP to 400 million. It's been around 280, 300 million the last few years. They did the Bill to Learn Act, which increased funding, but through a different pot. But, they could decide to bump up the traditional CIP to 400 million, which would mean additional money available. I don't know that it's going to happen next year, but if we don't ask for it, then we don't have the option. So, these are in there because they're a need. You know, we have design completed for these three, they're ready to go, it's just waiting on the state money. So, if the state decides to increase the CIP, then there's the possibility. I'm not sure it's going to happen this year, but you never know. Like I said, when the General Assembly meets, it always seems like something new comes out of it, and there is generally additional funding through some revenue, some avenue,
I do still have some concerns or questions about the Moten best addition, because I know that, you know, when you look at the EFMP, they're at 72% utilization, so, but I know that that can be worked out as part of the planning phase, right? Like, if there is a more economical and feasible way to do that project, because there is existing space in the building. I mean, I'm not, I don't know whether there is a way to do that in a more economical fashion, but that would be up for discussion during the planning phase, is that right?
Correct. The, you know, if the decision was to move ahead and fund the project, at least the design portion of it, we'd move ahead and form a planning committee and do an educational specification and look at that, and then hire an architect to look at, all right, what ways can you get the spaces that are needed in the most economical way, which is kind of what we always would do. I will say that the difficulty at that school is they have low class sizes. It's a Title I school, so their class sizes aren't as large, so 75% may look like, "Oh, 25% empty seats," but the reality is, is that's based on a state area capacity of a much, you know, 23 kids in every classroom. If you have 18, now there are seven empty seats in that classroom, but you don't really have those available for another class. So, they don't have as much room within the building as that raw number would tell you. It's meant to be a planning tool, a real course, rough planning tool. It's not meant to be, you know, when a principal staffs and runs a school, and, you know, they're looking at decisions on how best to teach kids, it's a little different, it gets in a much finer, so. But we would always work with the, you know, the principal and the teachers are members, the community are members of that planning committee, and we'd work with them to figure out what the best way to get them the space they need, so.
Right, okay. I guess the last question I had was on the, we did get the chart on the FCI score, so, I know that, you know, we dipped down from a 35 down to a 32 because of Career and Tech and East Middle, as those projects are kind of coming in, and then we start going back up again, because of not having additional modernizations. But it looks like we start dipping back down again out in FY '28. Is that the William Winchester potential modernization?
That's the large amount, you know, I think it's 35, 40 million for the William Winchester modernization that's showing in that, the sixth year of the CIP, so, that's what brings it down again, or starts to bring it down again.
Okay.
So, yeah, the difficult thing is, you can see, without doing a modernization or a large renovation every year, if you take two or three years off, that FCI starts to creep back up again, so.
So if we weren't to, if we, if you took William Winchester out, does that trajectory keep going up, that it's going to creep up by like about a percent a year after that point?
I would say, yeah, as a rough, it could jump a little more in any given year, depending on what systems are due that year, you know, across the inventory. But generally, I would say that's a good, good thought, you know, to just say roughly a percent a year.
Yeah, we probably, I mean, it wouldn't hurt to kind of look at it from the funding perspective, right? In order, we have it as part of our strategic plan, that we're going to try to maintain a 32% FCI score, right? And through doing Career and Tech and East Middle, we're able to get back to that point. Like, it's been creeping up, but it's going to come back down. But then, what is the amount of fun, funding that needs to be put in, in order to maintain the 32%?
Right.
Just an understanding of it.
Yeah.
From our point of view, you know, you have 40 buildings, you can't wait one a year. You have to keep up and maintain those buildings. We're looking at funding and projections and what's going to be available for those, and we also have numerous buildings we have to maintain, too. So, this all has to come together, and the more we can talk about it and discuss it, the better I think we're going to be planning these things in the future, because if we don't do it, and you delay a year or two, you're seeing what happens, and those numbers creep up fast.
Right. Those numbers do creep up fast, and I think, you know, got in a position several years ago that was basically untenable, right? And, so that's why we put it as part of the strategic plan, that we're going to try to maintain the 32%, but we do need to have these conversations, just to understand what kind of funding commitment that entails, in order to maintain that 32%.
And, you know, we have to look at both sides of it, and not everybody's going to be happy, I think, with the outcome sometimes, but we have to have those discussions and look at it, and see what we can do to keep your buildings functional, keep our buildings functional, and everything else in the county going, so.
Agreed. Anyone else? Anyone else? Okay, and we'll move on to new or unfinished business. I just have one comment, Dr. Lockard, and I don't know how we can check into this, but visiting schools, I talked to phys ed teachers today, of course, they're part of my family, and they were very concerned that the state has changed their grading policy... and they were very concerned that the state has changed their grading policy, their guidelines, and they do not get participation points. I would like to know more about that, what we can do to help them. And also, changing clothes and hygiene, they've come and changed the whole grading system. And teachers are very upset about it, because phys ed is activity and participation, and also learning the rules, and changing clothes, and not wearing the same clothes you have on to play basketball in, to go sit in your psych class beside somebody. So I was just wondering what we can do to help them, or we can look into it, or?
Of course we can, and we've been having recent discussions about that. We have our CNI board meeting coming up, where we're going to be doing a health presentation. We can make part of that, part of the health, physical education and health presentation. But we can also provide additional information to the board, as it stands today, and what we're planning on doing to support our physical education teachers.
Yeah, it wasn't going to fall on deaf ears, because you know how I am. And I just, I want to support them. I mean, it's an activity class. So if you can help us and give me any information, or help those teachers so that we can get on board and see what we can do for them.
Maybe we can start, Mr. Anderson, just by gathering what, if any of those changes were.
Yes.
Absolutely.
Then we can have some discussion about it.
I would appreciate it, because I'm out there for them, and for all teachers. But that came up a lot today when I was, when I was around.
We were just having a conversation last week with Jimmy, so, yeah.
Oh, okay, all right, so, all right. Thank you very much. I'm just concerned about them. Devaunchee?
I know in the last General Assembly, a bill was passed that gave access to free menstrual products in our schools bathrooms. And I know, and I just wanted to know with the first day of school, what the status of the implementation of that looks like.
Ms. Mistry, I might have to get back to you. It's a bill that phases that in over time. The state has some participation in either providing or reimbursing each local Board of Ed for the dispensers. I think it phased in high school and then middle school. Does that sound right, Carl? And I believe January 1 is the date for. Okay. I can email you or speak at another board meeting after I go, kind of remind myself of the phase in. But I think the phase in is high school first, then middle schools, at least a certain number of restrooms in the building where it would be available. And I kind of believe that January 1 was the key date to go ahead. And I know we've been looking for, waiting for some guidance from the state on, you know, would there be a reimbursement for the dispensers or not? And should we wait to proceed until we know more about that? But I could follow up and let you know.
All right, thank you.
All right. Thursday, September 23rd, Board of Education and the Board of County Commissioners will have a joint meeting in Conference Room 003 at the County Office Building. Then we will come back over here at 5:30 PM for a work session in this room. And then followed by that, we will have a CIP hearing, and that should be it for the day. I think that's enough. Then, on Wednesday, October 13th, at 5:00 PM, we will have a board meeting here in this room with citizen participation at 125 North Court Street. May I have a motion for adjournment? So moved by Dr. Dorsey, and second by Ms. Pataglia. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? It passes unanimously. Thank you, and thank you all, and have a great evening.